Don't even do the amendments. You should have the public hearing first.
But they gotta still put it on.
So they're meeting this Thursday?
Right.
Just if you're gonna table it, table the whole thing before making the amendments.
Oh, we are in a row. We had the sentence change, we may have, unless you want to, Lisa, and ask if they would, I don't understand, make a special change. She might be, just to reuse.
How do you know it right now, recall that city gets?
Technically, I think the chairman, we have four, they've got Orin and Lisa.
I haven't, oh, that's so, I don't know if I talked to you, right? This is a bit that, split up in one way or another.
Okay, we're gonna get started. I'm gonna call the regular meeting of the Board of Aldermen to order on Tuesday, March 26, 2024, at 7:30 PM in the Aldermanic Chamber. The prayer will be offered by Clerk, City Clerk Dan Healy, and Alderman Lopez will lead us in the pledge to the flag.
Almighty God, we have the high honor and the serious duty to manage the affairs of our beloved city. Fill us, O God, with a spirit of unity and understanding which enables us to face our multiple problems with a serene mind, with justice and charity for all, so that any and all decisions made by us will always be for the betterment and greater happiness of all our fellow citizens. So help us, God. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Everything all set, Donna?
Yes, thank you.
Let's start the meeting by taking a roll call.
Alderman O'Brien.
Present.
Alderwoman Timmons.
Here.
Alderman Moran.
Here.
Alderman Thibodeau.
Here.
Alderman Govea.
Here.
Alderman Lopez.
Here.
Alderman Sullivan.
Here.
Alderman Clemens.
Here.
Alderman Sennett.
Here.
Alderman Jettie.
Here.
Alderman Tio.
Here.
Alderman Cle.
Here.
Alderman Dowd.
Present.
Alderwoman Kelly.
Here.
Alderman Wilshire.
Here.
Fifteen present, zero absent.
Thank you. Also joining us this evening is Mayor Jim Donches and Corporation Counsel Steve Bolton. Mayor, did you wish to address the board this evening?
Uh, yes, Madam President. First, I wanted to congratulate the Nashua Public Health Department for their re-accreditation, uh, which was received very recently. Uh, they are the, our Nashua Public Health is the only public health department in the state of New Hampshire that is accredited, uh, and they, of course, do a very good job for our citizens, and they've worked very hard to achieve this, uh, accreditation, so I want to congratulate them, uh, and Bobby Bagley, the Director of Public Health and Community Services. I wanted to mention, uh, briefly, Madam President, R24039, which is the bonding plan we've talked about before that would limit it, limit the amount of borrowing the public would do, uh, where we've referred to it before and we created a priorities committee, but, uh, this would more officially adopt, uh, the plan of borrowing no more than $30 million a year for five years. As we've discussed, around seven percent of the city budget is for, uh, the payment of principal and interest, uh, and we, this, if we do this, that number would go up to some degree, but we need to keep that to a minimum, uh, in order to, um, keep the tax rate as low as we can. But of course, thank you all on the Board of Aldermen because the tax rate in the fall of 2023 went up only 1.9%, uh, excuse me, 0.9%, less than 1%. Uh, and I, and, uh, thank you for your hard work on that. I wanted to mention, Madam President, that we have a new business coming to downtown, Kettlehead Brewing from Tilton. Uh, one of the city employees who's, uh, very knowledgeable in this area tells me that they're very good, and so, um, that will make five breweries downtown, and all of which offer very quality products, very quality beer. Liz Hanem, the, the Economic Development Director, has talked about trying to put together like a, a pub crawl to all of our, all of our brewers, and, um, uh, anyway, we're looking forward to seeing them open on Main Street. And something came to light, uh, which I thought would be interesting and I'd pass along. I mentioned to you in previous meetings that, uh, we've acquired this product, uh, Placer AI, which using cellphone data can determine how many people were in a certain area over a certain period of time. In order to be recorded, you need to have been in that area for seven minutes. So, um, when you examine the expanded outdoor dining, this doesn't even include the sidewalks, the expanded portion of the outdoor dining for the period of time that was open last year, 2022, it drew 140,000 people to downtown. Um, now, there could be a little bit of, uh, you know, maybe discounted waitress, you know, a, a server or something like that, but obviously hun, you know, tens and tens of thousands of people. If we take 140,000 and each person spent an average of $30, that's $4 million to the downtown economy. If it were $20, then it's close to 3 million. So whatever the number is, whatever the average expenditure is, it's contributing a huge amount to the downtown economy, supporting businesses, uh, supporting servers, hosts, all kinds of employees, all of the industries that serve restaurants, and, uh, so it's clearly had a big impact, and the Placer AI is, uh, a very interesting tool. If you have more questions, Liz Hanem can, uh, answer them, uh, and, uh, can help to explain the process. Anyway, that's all I have, Madam President, but again, returning to the beginning, I want to thank the Health Department for their hard work and, uh, and congratulate them on their accreditation. Thanks, Madam President.
Responses to the remarks of the mayor. Alderwoman Timmons?
Thank you, President. Yes, um, the Division of Public Health and Community Service is celebrating their re-accreditation tomorrow, March 27th, at 12 noon. I encourage my colleagues to drop at 18 Marbury Street and to congratulate them. They did a fantastic job.
Alderman Moran?
Thank you, Madam President. Hopefully, I can be there tomorrow, with my patients around. Um, the, the AI for why was I impressed, that came down to the PDC meeting last week when we talked about that legislation you'll see here tonight about the extended outdoor dining, and I will be one of the first to admit I was a little, you know, um, like, look with your eyes, sometimes you don't see, uh, what's downtown, but I'm also not there, or nor do I have a satellite to monitor what's happening, but, uh,
Yet.
Yes, yes. But I am, uh, was blown away by the data that was brought to PDC and that, uh, really just, uh, reinforces the activities downtown. I will tell you that St. Patrick's Day weekend, you don't need AI to tell, to tell me that it was a eventful, uh, uh, downtown vibrant life. I think, uh, you know, for me, Casey McGee's is my spot, uh, and then right after the Peddler's Daughter, I'm sure Alderman O'Brien appreciates, uh,
God bless the I.
I too am, Iris, but I never get the credit. It's not, it's not as great as Sullivan and O'Brien.
Aaron Gobrah.
But, uh, so, back to the, uh, St. Patrick's Day, great vibrant downtown, I'm glad to see all the young people coming out and enjoying our city.
Alderman Sullivan?
Thank you, Madam President. Mr. Mayor, would you be able to speak to the situation in the Assessing Department?
Uh, yes, I could. Um, so, we received a s, a group of resignations last week, I believe, um, uh, four people resigned, um, which of course creates, uh, the necessity of trying to fill those positions or fulfill that responsibility. Um, first of all, uh, Tim Cummings called the State DRA to just inform them of this. DRA means Department of Revenue Administration. Uh, they supervise assessing across the state. Um, they say they understand the situation, actually, a lot of cities and towns are having this kind of problem, uh, assessors are hard to find. But, uh, we have a staffing agency who's lined up, uh, personnel to come on Monday. Uh, one of our full-time employees has been training down there and will be working in assessing, uh, uh, as we, uh, move forward, uh, at least until we have more full-time employees. And one thing we've talked about for a long time is potentially, um, contracting out that function. Uh, so, Mr. Cummings is talking with third-party providers, uh, to, meaning assessing firms such as Vision, not specifically them, but it could be, uh, Vision did the revaluation, uh, to provide assessing services on a, on a contract basis. So that is where we stand now. Um, we will, you know, we can update you as, uh, as progress occurs, as, as time goes on.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
Anyone else? Okay. Recognition period. Oh, I'm sorry, Alderman Cle, I missed you.
No, that's, that's okay. I just wanted to make comment about the, the Placer, um, AI. My colleague, uh, is Chair of PDC, um, was wild about it, but I can tell you that I was wowed by it, um, at the Board of Trustees for the Nashua Center for the Arts when, um, Director Hanem came and talked to us about, um, the number of people that came and how far they came from. So it's not just counting heads or counting phones or things like that. It can give us a distance as to how far people are traveling to come into our city, which was absolutely amazing. I don't have the numbers offhand, but to see people coming from Maine, um, down from Rhode Island, and gives us the age grouping and so on, so it kind of helps. And she gives these reports to, um, the businesses, um, just kind of to, to let them know that, you know, people are kind of around and so on to help them, but not, um, necessarily sharing them because they think there's certain licenses, but to kind of help our businesses in the area, so, um, I think it's, I think it's amazing, and I want to thank her for bringing this to us.
Okay. Recognition period.
None.
Reading minutes of previous meetings, there being no objection, I'll declare the minutes of the Board of Aldermen meeting of February 27th, 2024, be accepted, placed on file, and the reading suspended. Communications requiring only procedural actions and written reports from liaisons.
Communication has been received from Emily Marocello, OEM, regarding input on Nashua's Hazard Mitigation Plan update. In communication has been received from Tim Cummings, Administrative Services Director, regarding notification in closeout of DPW Administrative Office Building Construction Project.
There being no objection, I will accept the communications and place them on file.
Madam President, I do not object, but I wonder if you allow, if Mr. Cummings can come up and just give us, uh, I think we were under budget on this project, and I think this would be a wonderful opportunity to show that we can do it wisely in the city. Uh, you want to toot your own horn there, Mr. Cummings?
Madam President.
If you want to talk to us about it, we'd be happy to listen.
Thank you, Madam President. Through you to this distinguished body for the record, Tim Cummings, Director of Administrative Services. What Alderman O'Brien is talking about, and of course, we should recognize, it was under his leadership, and, and Rick Dowd is the Joint Committee of Board of Public Works and Infrastructure that oversaw the construction of the DPW Administrative Office Building, which had a total project budget of, uh, 15.5 million. I'm doing this from memory, so, uh, hopefully it correlates with the communication and, uh, before you, uh, but of that fifteen and a half million, uh, hard construction costs, that would be your construction cost relative to, to constructing the building, was, uh, around $11 million. We had, uh, soft costs and miscellaneous expenses of around two-ish million dollars. We came in under budget ultimately of about 2.2 million dollars from what was originally anticipated. We delivered the project on time and, and, and under budget. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Madam President, for your acceptance.
You're, you're very welcome. Period for public comment relative to items expected to be acted upon this evening. We have six people who have signed up. Sally Newhall? Yep, please give your name and address for the record.
I thought I'd have to wait another half an hour, sorry. So I'm Reverend Sally Newhall, I live at 33 Digital Drive in Unit 308 here in Nashua. Um, and many of you seen me hanging around your committee meetings, particularly those that have to do with housing issues in greater Nashua for about the, that past eight years. I wanted to speak about the Elm Street School property. Um, I was at the meeting last week where they voted on the amendment that you'll be dealing with later tonight, and I just wanted to share my disappointment that what I heard what, during this hearings with the consultants last year in public hearings about the possible use of the Elm Street School, was a disappointment on the part of the community that all of the, uh, ways in which people could use the property now, the school property, whether it's the basketball courts, whether it's the grass out front for picnics, whether it's just playground material, would all be gone. And I hope that there would be some inclusion in whatever was planned for the future to provide some kind of recreational thing, particularly in a part of the city where there isn't anything. And so what was passed, uh, and is coming before you tonight includes no provision for that, no request for developers to include that, nor does there seem to have been a consideration of perhaps giving part of the land to the Parks Department and asking them to come back with a recommendation. And I, I'm just very disappointed in the process, to be honest with you. Um, I tried to attend as many hearings and, and ways to talk about this property over the last couple of years as I could, and I just feel it's a real failing on the part, part of the city in not considering this request at the city. So thank you for hearing me tonight. I just got to tell you, I attended a part of your, so many of your meetings, I'm really impressed with how much you could do, and I'm not surprised that one aspect gets missed, but I figure it's then my job to bring it back to your attention. So I'm not complaining, I'm just saying, you missed it, I hope you figured out a way to include it. Thank you.
Thank you. Lindsay Rinaldi?
Hi, folks, my name is Lindsay Rinaldi. I am at 37 June Street in Lowell, Mass, but I've been a longtime Nashua resident, grew up here, currently serving as the nonprofit Executive Director of the Nashua Community Music School. Today, I speak to you in my position as the Chair of the Nashua Arts Commission, and I am speaking to you strongly in favor of saving the KEIF Center for the Arts, the KEIF Auditorium. The KEIF Center for the Arts is a vital piece of Nashua history, a 1936 Second New Deal WPA project that needs preservation in our town, in our home. It's home to the oldest arts organizations in the city, including Symphony New Hampshire, 100 years old, the Spartans Drum and Bucol Core, 70 years old, the Actor Singers, also turning 70 this year. Where will they go if this facility disappears? When you are considering your resolution tonight, I want you to think, how will our city be different without these organizations? But it's not just those organizations that you need to think of. When the Elm Street School closes, the entire area, the entire Elm Street complex, the community that's there will be gone. There will be a gaping hole there, there will be no place for the kids to play, there will be no place for the arts to congregate if the area is turned 100% into housing. Now, I am absolutely in favor of making sure that the area has additional housing, my personal hope is hopefully mixed housing and affordable housing in there too, but we need to establish an anchor, we need to establish a community center in place of
One minute.
this, uh, uh, in place of this, this removed, um, Elm Street Middle School. The arts organizations have come to me and they have said, we have had meetings with the administration, and we're not being listened to. So they have launched a letter-writing campaign to the state, to Shaheen's office, as well as Custer, in order to solicit additional funding in support of saving the KEIF Center for the Arts today.
Thirty seconds.
Making sure that the funding needed to secure this incredible asset, which has the opportunity to be a community cornerstone, an anchor for the arts, and an overall economic driver, if reimagined appropriately, based off of the new development plan, it's a huge opportunity for this city, and it doesn't have to be funded solely by taxpayer dollars. There are so many other ways that it can be funded, as long as the project has the right imagination, the right will, and the right time to succeed. Thank you.
Lori Ordolano?
Lori Ordolano, 41 Berkeley Street. Um, I just want to start my clock. I just want to, um, discuss very briefly the tax incremental financing letters that were included. You know, I have a few concerns about how we're working with our tax incremental financing advisory boards, and I guess I'd like to see a little more structure there, and, um, the school street, um, TIF board, I think, really isn't representative of the neighborhood that we're trying to implement changes to with the buildings. We put all City Hall people on the school street TIF essentially, because it incorporated the parking garage for City Hall and the Art Center. But it also incorporates, uh, incorporates a lot of, um, East Pearl Street, um, or West Pearl Street, uh, West Pearl Street by the Art Center, and all of those businesses are not represented. And, you know, there's a lot of potential gentrification that's going to go on in there, and I think we missed the mark on that board. And I also think that those advisory boards are there to give input regarding the money being spent, how it's being spent, and give approval to that, so that the designated speaker, which in this case is Director Cummings, comes forth to recommend the, the position of the advisory board. I don't really see that happening the way I think it should happen. And I know there have been meetings in the past, or, or, uh, plans brought forward with spending of money, where the advisory board was never called together to even know about it. And I, I, you know, these tax incremental financing districts, I think, have the potential in this city that you may very well be interested in growing them more. I am very concerned that they have to be regulated and run per the laws that you establish in the ordinances for how those boards operate. You know, I know the city of Burlington just got slammed with a order from the state for improperly handling their TIF funds, accounting for them
One minute.
on their reports, and, um, and handling their advisory groups. And I think that we want to be careful, and we should look into what happened over in Vermont, and be careful about how we're implementing ours here. I think we could do a better job. Um, and, you know, so, and I liked what Ms. Rinaldi said in reaching out, but I, um, to the, um, state or senators to try and get assistance in finding money to save the,
Thirty seconds.
KEIF Auditorium, but I will caution you, when you enter into these public-private partnerships like you did with the Art Center, you need to disclose, you need to have avenues set up so that public money, when it's mixed with private money, can be accounted for, because we did not do that on the Performing Arts Center, and it has created a lot of litigation that could have been avoided with open records. Thank you.
Paula Johnson?
Good evening, everyone. My name is, I'm going to use my title that I used to have, the Honorable Paula Johnson. Yeah, and I never thought anything with titles, but I figure, what the heck, I'll use my title. I still live at 15 Westbourne Drive. Um, I'm talking tonight about R-24-032. I don't think many of you understand about the RSA 194:61. Number four, in the right of refusal, negotiations with a charter of public schools shall be the option of the offering school district, whether to sell or lease a property, under consideration, at fair market value or less, for a term to be agreed upon by the parties. A lease shall include ingress and to the egress of the facility, and where a part of the facility is leased, the right to access and use of the common land shared by. Well, the reason I'm bringing this up is because the school district has to report to who? The New Hampshire Department of Education when this building becomes free. The city doesn't really have that right to come in and scoop it up, and I've asked these questions all along. And it says here, on January 1st, 2022, and on July 1, every year thereafter, the Superintendent of School District shall report to the Department of Education each used, and I read you number four already. So, the school district owns the building, has to report to the Department of Education, which, like in an election, you know, the school district and the Department of Education on a recount. And so, you can't just scoop this up. So the Department of Education has to become part of this. So I would suggest everybody take a look at RSA 194:6, RSA for school buildings, because it's very where, it's very well clear, right through this whole thing. You know, some people might say I'm, I'm wrong, but, you know, it's right here, black and white
One minute.
on everything. I think we should keep the KEIF Auditorium. We said that when I was on the Board of Ed, you know, we built the Center for the Arts, which is costing us an arm and a leg, um, but the KEIF Auditorium does have some value in the city, it's history. And when we talk about affordable housing, I've counted over 10 new apartment buildings in the city. There's nothing affordable here? Nothing went up that was affordable for anybody to move into the city here? I mean, this is crazy. What are we putting up here in the city?
Thirty seconds.
And so the, the issue is here, can we save this area? What are we going to do with the school? And the school district needs to sit down with the Board of Aldermen, and Mr. Cummings, I think you have to now put the cart before the horse here. It belongs to the school district, and I was fighting about that when I was on the board. That is a school district building, and this school district should have the right, what should do with it. Thank you.
Jennifer McCormick?
Good evening, everyone. Jen McCormick, I am the Director at your Public Library, and I also live at 43 Lund Street. Uh, my comments tonight are relative to two items on your agenda, the potential renovation of the KEIF Auditorium and the design of a new garage for the Department of Public Works. As this board discusses those major capital projects, I wanted to take an opportunity and remind you of the significant needs of the library building to bring it up to code and make it a safe and accessible building that operates efficiently. A technical assessment of the library facility was completed in October of 2022, the result of which was, uh, an estimated cost of renovation, sorry, I'm fumbling this sentence, which estimated the cost of a base scope of renovation at 16 to 20 million dollars. That level of renovation would bring the building into compliance with the ADA, replace all of our windows, correct the failed flashing under the bricks that's allowing water infiltration, install sprinklers, and a new fire alarm system, among other improvements. An additional 10 to 12 million dollars would be required for a programmatic study and a related enhanced scope of renovation. That is to say that your library building needs a $30 million investment so that it can continue to operate for another 50 years in its downtown location. As it stands now, there are areas of the building where we've had to remove shelving and seating due to water damage. There is one single accessible restroom in a 60,000-square-foot building. The HVAC system is 53 years old, it's well beyond the end of life, and our ancient windows are And our ancient windows are conducting heat out of the building instead of containing it. And I'm especially concerned that members of this board may not recognize the critical role that the library plays in the life of the city and its residents. The library is not a quiet building full of books. It is a busy community center that supports learners of all ages, provides professional research assistance, maintains a special collection of local history and genealogy materials, offers computer classes and provides meeting space for more than 40 community groups. I have a couple of numbers I'm going to squeeze in in 40 seconds that I think help my, make my point. In March, not the busiest month of the year, we've already had 16,000 people visit the library. And in the first two quarters of this fiscal year, our meeting rooms have been used more than 2,200 times by community members. More than 8,000 people attended our kids programs in the first two quarters of this fiscal year. And in that same time period, more than 200,000 items were borrowed. The library is part of the fabric of the community. And I hope that you will keep our building needs in mind as you discover, discuss the future of the KEIF and other potential projects. Thank you.
Thank you. Bob Keating.
My name is Bob Keating, 5 Coburn Woods, a member of Granite State Organizing Project. I want to speak on the proposal about the redevelopment of the Elm Street School. I'm very much appreciated that it's reached this point in which housing is going to be a, a center in this proposal. I appreciate it, many of the, uh, board members from prior cycles who have supported Housing Trust Fund and Inclusionary Zoning as we continue to try to make our city more affordable. And I hope that as the proposal moves through, that a significant portion, the majority of the housing is for folks on an income basis for low and moderate income. So thanks again for the work and I hope that continues in that area. Thank you.
Thank you. Communications requiring final approval.
Communication has been received from Mayor Jim Donchess regarding Tax Increment Finance Development Program, H.L. Turner Group, Inc.
Alderman, please.
Yes, Madam President. I motion to accept, place on file and approve a professional engineering services contract for construction administrative services of the Riverfront, sorry, Riverfront Boardwalks Project with H.L. Turner Group, LLC in the amount of $650,403. Funding will be through Department 183 Economic Development. Fund 55699, Other Contracted Services/Riverfront TIF Fund.
Heard the motion. Is there discussion on that motion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries.
Communication has been received from Mayor Jim Donchess regarding Tax Increment Finance Development Program, Weston and Sampson Engineers.
I'm sorry, Alderman Gavilla.
Thank you, Madam President. I move to accept, place on file and approve a contract for construction administration services for the Riverfront Parks Project with Weston and Sampson Engineers in the amount of $95,000. Funding will be through Department 183 Economic Development Fund 55699, Other Contracted Services/Riverfront TIF Fund.
You've heard the motion? Discussion on that motion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries.
Communication has been received from Mayor Jim Donchess regarding Tax Increment Finance Development Program, Hayner Swanson, Inc.
Alderman Thibodeau.
I'd like to make a motion to accept, place on file and approve a contract for project management and construction administration services of the Riverfront Project with, from Hayner and Swanson Incorporated in the amount of $1,246,460. Funding will be through Department 183 Economic Development Fund 53107, Architect and Engineering Services/Riverfront TIF Fund.
You've heard that motion? Is there discussion on that motion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries.
Communication has been received from Mayor Jim Donchess regarding Tax Increment Finance Development Program, Morin's Landscaping.
Alderman Clemens.
Thank you, Madam President. I move to accept, place on file and approve a contract for construction services of the Riverfront Project for Renaissance and Bicentennial Parks with Morin's Landscaping in the amount of $3,688,897. Funding will be through Department 183 Economic Development Fund 81700, Infrastructure Improvements/Riverfront TIF Fund.
You've heard that motion? Is there discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries.
Communication has been received from Mayor Jim Donchess regarding Tax Increment Finance Development Program, Sea and Shore Contracting.
Alderman Timmons.
Thank you, Madam President. I move to accept, place on file and approve a contract with construction services of the Riverfront Project Boardwalk Construction with Sea and Shore Contracting in the amount of $7,000, I mean, $7,970,90. Funding will be through Department 183 Economic Development Fund 81700, Infrastructure Improvements/Riverfront TIF Fund.
You've heard the motion? Discussion on that motion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries. Petitions?
None.
Nominations, appointments and elections.
Board of Assessors, Charles Dobbins, new appointment, 47 Dogwood Drive, Unit 20, Nashua, New Hampshire, 03062. Mine Falls Park Advisory Committee, Lon Hoberger, new appointment, term to expire April 9, 2027, 5 Wesley Road, Nashua, New Hampshire, 03062.
There being no objection, I'll accept the appointments by the mayor as read and refer them to the Personnel Administrative Affairs Committee. Reports of committees, there being no objection, I'll declare the report of the February 28, 2024 Committee on Infrastructure be accepted and placed on file. There being no objection, I'll declare the report of the March 2, 2024 Personnel Administrative Affairs Committee be accepted and placed on file. There being no objection, I'll declare the report of the March 5, 2024 Ad-hoc Capital Debt Committee be accepted and placed on file. Confirmation of mayor's appointments?
None.
Unfinished business resolutions?
Second reading of R-24-017 relative to the acceptance of $33,929.50 from the United States Department of Justice, Bureau of Justice Assistance into Police Grant Activity 2023 Bulletproof Vest Partnership Grant Program.
Alderman Lopez.
I'd like to make a recommendation for final passage of R-24017.
The motion is for final passage. Discussion on that motion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries and Resolution 2417 is declared duly adopted.
Second reading of R-24-022 amended, authorizing the mayor to apply for and expend the Community Development Block Grant, CDBG, in Home Investment Partnership Program Funds for fiscal year 2025.
Alderman Kelly.
Thank you. Madam President, I would like to move to table R-24022 until May 14, 2024. Board of Aldermen meeting to allow for the required public hearing and public commentary.
Motion is to table. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries and Resolution 2422 is tabled until the May 14, 2024. Board of Aldermen meeting.
Second reading of R-24-023, authorizing Penetech Corporation to renew and extend its line of credit with TD Bank, N.A.
Alderman, please.
Uh, thank you, Madam President. I motion for final passage of R-24-023.
Motion is for final passage. Discussion on that motion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries and Resolution 2423 is declared duly adopted.
Madam President?
Alderman Clemens.
I have a point of order. Uh, something just came to my mind and I want to ask a question through you and through Corporation Counsel if I, if I may.
Sure.
The, from what I understand on R-2422, I know we just tabled that. However, there was a Goldenrod copy and I don't know, does it matter if we do not amend to the Goldenrod copy tonight? Is the public hearing and everything going to be relevant to what's proposed in that amendment?
I think you'll be fine. If you still wish to go forward with that amendment, you can go forward with it after getting the public input.
Okay, thank you.
Welcome.
Oh, I'm sorry, Alderman Lopez.
Um, I'm just a little bit concerned because that was the reallocations that we did at Human Affairs Committee for CDBG funding. So I was wondering if maybe Director Sullivan or Director Cummings would be able to weigh in on that?
I don't know if Director Sullivan, he is here.
He's always here.
Director Sullivan.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Alderman Lopez, for reminding me of my poor work-life balance. I appreciate that. The, so the, the reason for the request to table from particularly the Community Development Division is that we have not complied with HUD's Required Public Comment and Public Hearing Process Guideline and the timeline that's associated with that. Relative to the question on the Goldenrod copy that Alderman Clemens asked, I don't believe that it require, would require the process to start over again. I think we're, we're just fine. And not that I'm in a position to agree with Corporation Counsel, but I, I would. I believe we're just fine without making that adjustment tonight. I believe it can be considered at the next meeting of the, of the board. Thank you.
Okay.
Second reading of R-24-024, authorizing Penetech Corporation in Penetech East Utility, Inc. to enter into a term loan with Cobank ACV.
Alderman, please.
Uh, thank you, Madam President. I motion for final passage of R-24-024.
Motion is for final passage. Discussion on that motion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries and Resolution 24-24 is declared duly adopted.
Second reading of R-24-030 relative to the acceptance of $86,015 from the State of New Hampshire Department of Environmental Services, Exotic Species Program and to authorize the transfer of matching funds.
Alderman Lopez.
Uh, I'd like to recommend a final passage of, I'm sorry, Madam President, R-24030.
Motion is for final passage. Discussion on that motion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries and Resolution 24-30 is declared duly adopted.
Second reading of R-24-032 amended, supporting the issuance of a request for proposals relative to the sale of Elm Street Middle School property.
Alderman Clemens.
Uh, thank you, Madam President. I would move to amend R-2432 by replacing it with the Goldenrod copy of amendments made at the Planning and Economic Development Committee. And I'd like to speak to that.
Alderman Clemens.
Thank you. Uh, so this was discussed at length in the Economic Development Committee. And the, what this amendment does is two things. One, it, uh, says that any proposal shall include a portion of units for residents that have federally funded housing vouchers. So essentially what that will do is make sure that there is a variable income levels for the proposed project. And then the second thing that it does is it, it essentially says that, um, we are looking for a redevelopment that includes the KEIF auditorium.
Discussion, Alderman Gavilla.
Thank you, Madam President. I rise today in opposition of the proposed amendment. We had a very spirited discussion about this at the committee level. And although I do agree with the first part of the amendment with the housing, it was the second part about the KEIF auditorium is what I couldn't get fully behind at the time. Uh, the city being where it is with 133 million in capital projects that are needed and ad hoc committee on how we spend that money, taking on a project like this that is going to vary anywhere from 10 million to about 30 million. The 10 million side of this project as described to us was to put it in a mothball state, which wouldn't be really used. It would just be there alone. The 30 million being something that could be fully managed by an outside company like we have with our downtown Performing Arts Center. In my opinion, doing a $10 million option to mothball the KEIF auditorium is not in the best interest of the city. I would pre, I would prefer to see we have kind of a wide open landscape of what we could do with this area and see what the market and what the developers can bring back to us. Madam President, if we go through with this, something's going to have to suffer somewhere in the city. What, what will it be? Will it be our fire, our police, the library, the schools? There's only so much money to go around that we can do with bonding. And while outside sources for money is great, we knew this was coming a year, year and a half ago and no strides were made in that time to prepare for this. So a, at this time, I, I cannot get on the back of this amendment that ensures the KEIF has to be in a proposal. And I would like to see what the market can tell us what we could do with this prime nine-acre parcel right in the middle of our downtown. Thank you.
Alderman Thibodeau.
Thank you, Madam President. So I was in that committee and I spoke to it last week. And I'm going to probably repeat a few of the things I spoke about last week. And this is going to be, uh, you know, at risk of Director McCormick taking my library card away. Um, but I'm certainly for, you know, library repairs and I want the library to stick around. I know how important it is. And I don't think we're, no matter what happens, I don't think the fire, police are going to be things we cut. It would be something other than those. I think those are the, the most important things I think those are the most important things in the city, right? Making sure we're safe. So those always have to come first. And I said it last week that this would be probably the hardest thing that we have to decide on over the next, our next term here, because it's a big space and it's going to cost potential lots of money, or it could be bringing in tons of money. So it's extremely important to the city. And I said that, you know, President Kennedy mentioned that going to the moon would, they would be doing it not because it was easy, but because it's hard. Now, this may be harder than going to the moon, and it may be more expensive, right? But we have to find ways to do this. And I tasked everybody there, Director Hanham, COO Cummings, Director Sullivan, us, the Board for the Keefe Auditorium, the commission that we have, to look for alternative ways. You know, also our federal delegation, which was spoken about earlier, and also Alderman Cle had mentioned last week as well. We have smart people out there that can find ways to do this. You know, could it not work? Yeah, yeah, it could absolutely not work. But why not try? If people didn't try things, things don't get done. And to evolve the city and to continue to make it grow, we have to look at different ways to do things. And I think we can do a lot of things here, not only try to preserve the Keefe, but also bring in the kind of housing we need. You know, I don't know where we're going to get for proposals, but I'd like to see what we can get. And I think it's important. You know, it's a beautiful auditorium, and I think, you know, and I'd like to hear at some point during this conversation, and I think we will, from Alderman Dowd. He's done a lot of school-type work and construction work, and I think he can tell us a little bit more about maybe what he thinks the cost would be, because I think there are ways to do it in a better way. And, you know, if somebody says to me, the only way we can keep the Keefe is to spend thirty million dollars of taxpayer money, that's probably going to be a hard no for me. So we have to find other ways to do it. And I think we can do it. And I think it's worth trying for the, you know, for some of the reasons people said today when they spoke. So, thank you.
Alderman Moran.
Thank you, Madam President. First, I just want to point out the initiative to have the vouchers involved, and I sincerely appreciate my colleague Alderman Clemmons for putting that amendment forward. Over the past couple of weeks, I've been talking to a lot of nonprofits, and you've seen the National Inc. Link article about the housing for low-income folks being kind of compounded on each other, you know, not a lot of green space, not having the opportunity for the children to have, you know, balconies and all these other aspects. And, you know, that unfortunately has been decided, that's in the past. But it's about going forward, we can have the opportunity to have people of all income brackets in a location that has green space, has balconies, and we can break these socio-economic barriers to living in the same building as someone who makes forty thousand dollars a year or a hundred K a year. And it shows that the city is willing to negotiate on letting everyone have an opportunity to live in a, you know, a vibrant development with, you know, gardens and community and other aspects that don't make sense because they have to be cut from the lower-income developments, because that's, you're maximizing space per square foot. If the developers want to make something or anything, they have to cut that space. But doing this allows for a remedy to allow folks to still have that green space and sense of community. So I sincerely appreciate that, Alderman Clemmons. As far as the Keefe, you know, I've had this conversation with Alderman, my colleague from Ward One. You know, I'm not from here. I don't have that connection like the community does. It's hard for me to say just, you know, I could say, hey, I have nothing to do with it, let's tear it down and build even more housing. But there's history there. And if this comes back later on and that we've exhausted options of not paying for the cost to maintain it, I probably won't be able to support that. But I think we deserve it, the community, to have a chance to try to save it through all these different measures, whether it's a TIF or renovation grants or whatever it might be, to continue. I mean, that's named after a former state representative, there's history to it, people went to high, that was their high school. It is very difficult for someone like me coming out of, you know, Lowell, and saying, tear it down, put up apartments. And I will go back to my childhood about the Lowell Auditorium. Similar conversations were had, and I was just there last week seeing Flippy, you know. Things can happen if the community comes together to mitigate costs. But if, and we talked about this at PEDC, if you don't tell the developers and the RFP that that's what we want to keep, then they're going to make the best proposal, and the best proposal is tearing that down and making themselves a lot of money off of more apartments or condos. And if we tell them we want to keep that, we get a proposal around keeping it, we give the community opportunity to fundraise and save the Keefe. And what would happen if we don't get the money that's needed to maintain it? Just like Alderman Clemmons said at the PEDC, they're not going to say no to tearing it down and building more apartments. It just, that's just the opposite of capitalism, right? They're not going to say, no, thank you. So I think we owe it to the community and the people that have been here to at least give them a shot. But I'll say, I would probably draw my colleague in Ward One, whenever this comes back, if we can't make that happen, I would probably have to say, we tried.
Alderman Kelly.
Thank you. I'll be supporting this amendment. I think that the work that was done by the committee is really smart in allowing us to look at all of the community priorities. We've heard from the public, there's a lot of need, and it's a huge piece of land. So talking about green space, talking about mitigating costs, a lot of that has really been put in here. So I think it's good legislation. Also want to remind everybody that this is just the first step in an RFP process, so we are not necessarily beholden to anything. It's just allowing us to put our values out and make sure that the proposals that come back match what our sustainability program is, what our livable Nashua. We've done a lot of work in terms of what do we want to see in Nashua, and this just continues to reflect that.
Alderman Jettie.
Thank you. So, you know, could I through you ask Corporation Counsel, and I don't want to put you on the spot, and I don't know if you're prepared to answer this, but I'm wondering about the issue raised by former Alderman, former school board member Johnson about RSA 194, column six. She seemed to be saying that we're jumping the gun, that we don't have the authority to ask for a proposal on this school property. Could you comment on that?
Well, you probably don't have the authority to do anything to the building or the property until the National Board of Education determines that the facility is no longer needed for school purposes, and then it reverts back to the city, and then you would have the authority. But planning is not actually touching the building. Getting RFPs out is not touching the building itself. So assuming that at the end of this school year or before that, the Board of Education makes that determination, you'll be fine. And that's no impediment to passing this now. There's no reason to do it or not do it.
Thank you. So if I could continue, thank you for that answer. So I'm struggling with this. You know, I look back, you know, after we had our meeting, Planning and Economic Development Committee meeting, you know, I went back and looked at the studies that were done regarding this property. And, you know, I was reminded, looking at that, you know, of, you know, we talk about the history, I was reminded that, you know, this once was the South Common. There was no building on it. It was a, I don't know if you've seen that report, but there's a reproduction, I think of a postcard showing the South Common, and it's an open space with, it looks like, you know, trees and lawn, grass, and, you know, these sidewalks intersecting the thing diagonally. It looked like a beautiful place. You know, kind of reminds, kind of reminded me of, you know, the Boston Common. And I think back on, you know, how our predecessors at some point in time, I can't remember the year, but a long time ago, you know, decided we needed a new high school, and they picked that property to build this high school on it. And at that time, there was plenty of land available in Nashua. You know, they, I don't know what the, you know, the financial situation was, but, you know, I kind of, you know, think it's too bad that the decision was made to build the school on that property, you know, giving up this beautiful open space in the middle of downtown. And so now we have another opportunity to deal with that property. You know, the Keefe Auditorium is now part of the building. Keefe Auditorium has been, you know, a great asset to the city. And, you know, I'm sympathetic to the people who would like to keep it. I think, I think I feel the same way. Whether we can afford to or not is a question that has to be decided at some point. But I would hate to see us give up the Keefe. So, you know, that part of the amendment I'm in favor of, you know, the part, the rest of the resolution, which calls for, you know, seeking a request for proposal to, you know, keep the Keefe, but, you know, build, you know, housing, especially affordable housing, on the rest of it, I mean, I, again, I'm torn. I know that housing is a crisis, that we need more housing, especially affordable housing. But, you know, I'm not sure, you know, asking developers to come up with a proposal to, you know, give us their best idea about how to provide that housing, you know, I'm afraid we're going to get a proposal which carves out the Keefe, but the rest of it is going to be full of buildings, full of housing. And, you know, during our meeting, you know, former Alderman, current Representative Plamunden spoke, he represents that area, and he talked about what a loss it would be, you know, to lose that, the open space that's there, you know, the gymnasium that's there, the opportunity for recreation, for open space, you know, possible future use by the city. You know, that struck me. And, you know, something else that struck me, you know, was what Director Cummings said about, you know, if we put out a request for proposal, you know, I kind of felt, well, let's just put it out there and see what comes back, and then we can make a decision. But he, you know, he kind of reminded me that, you know, that these proposals are very expensive undertakings on a part of developers. And if we request a developer to put in the time and money necessary to come up with a proposal, and then after that, we say, you know, on second thought, you know, housing's not the right thing, we're going to do something else with it. You know, that would be unfair to the developer, and it would really kind of ruin our credibility with any future request for proposal. You know, if we get the reputation that we're not really serious when we put out one of these proposals, you know, that could be very harmful. So, you know, I thought about that, and I said, yeah, you know, we shouldn't be asking for a request for proposal unless we're really committed that this is what we want. And, you know, I'm not, I'm not there yet. I'm not committed to giving up this property for housing. You know, I think of that neighborhood, I think of the people that live there, and I think of, you know, I may, I may be completely wrong about this, but I think there are other properties, you know, that where housing could be developed. Once we give up this site, it's gone forever. I mean, there's no, there's no way we're ever going to get back this possibility of open space and recreational space. And, you know, and I, you know, I think back, you know, when you, when you think of, you know, Boston, the center of Boston, you know, do you, do you think about the apartment buildings? Or do you think about the Boston Common? What's the iconic thing about Boston if it isn't the Boston Common? When you think about New York City, do you think about all the apartment buildings? Or do you think about Central Park? And, you know, any other famous cities, you know, you look at London, Paris, you know, they're all remarkable for these, you know, large parks in the middle of the city. And so, so that, that's where I'm at. I'm not ready to request, you know, put out a request for a proposal for, for housing. So I, I hate to disappoint all the people who have spent a lot of time looking at this. I don't think it's, I'm not saying I won't be ever, that I won't be supporting it ever, but right now, I just don't think it's, it's ready to go forward in its present form. So I cannot support it. Thank you.
Thank you. Alderman Cle.
Thank you. Madam President, I think I spoke enough probably at the PEDC meeting, so I'm going to just try to make some highlighted points. It was mentioned before, the history of this building, this nineteen thirty-six building that was a WPA project. We talk about that, it was the, it was not the first high school in Nashua, but it was built to be a high school. The first high school was Mount Pleasant, which is no longer with us because that particular one burned down. But the long and the short of it is, it was built there, and I would love to see it go back to the comment of what it was, but I don't think that that is going to happen. But the history also is, for the Keefe, the Keefe was named after Edmund M. Keefe. He was a twenty-year veteran of our school system as a teacher and as a superintendent. And he finally retired after living here in the city, I believe, seventy years. But after he, he finally retired, he didn't just kind of go away and he and his wife enjoyed their life. No, he ran for state rep. He became an eight-term state rep here in the city of Nashua. And, and he loved the city. We apparently felt as much love for him that we named this after the building. If that building goes away, so does his memory, so does the name. And while maybe that's not a good enough reason to keep it, I think it's at least a good enough reason to look towards how we can keep this incredible building. Everybody else has already talked about all of those entities that will go away, this symphony, actors, singers will have to find a new place, and so many other things. And maybe we will find a new place, but this is where they belong. I also say that we, I believe firmly that we may not have to necessarily touch the inside of it, obviously we do have to get some kind of HVAC for it. But I went to the Palace way back when, before they got all those nice new seats. I remember sitting in cracked seats. I still went to those performances. So while we talk about a lot of money, we are going to need some money, but maybe we can get enough money from our federal delegations that have been spoken to, and maybe we can get donations. Maybe we can do more private than public, hopefully. But we'll never know that if we put out an RFP or of any type that says you have an option of knocking it down. Who would not want a blank canvas to work with? We would actually be killing the Keefe just with that RFP alone. So for this reason, I will support this entire thing, although I do agree with Alderman Jettie, I would love to see a giant green space, but I don't think it'll happen. So, thank you.
Alderman Senate.
Thank you, Madam President. Wow, tough hacks to follow. My colleague from Ward Five used a word that I really like in regard to this property, which is possibilities. There's a lot of possibilities for this tract of land in our downtown. There's a lot of opportunity, and there's a lot of unknowns. We don't know what those proposals are going to look like, but there are certain inevitabilities that were brought up at the committee level, and one of them, I think, is paramount, is the fact that without this amendment, we can almost guarantee that any developer that offers a proposal is going to want that blank slate, which means no more Keefe Auditorium. You know, my colleague from Ward Eight was, you know, really specific to mention that we've got to try. I look at this as one of two ways. If the proposals that come back to us aren't going to work, or we don't get the proposals that we're expecting that will keep the Keefe Auditorium, we'll get a second chance to tear down the Keefe Auditorium, to put it crudely. If we just go ahead with the understanding that that's probably going to happen, we don't get a second chance to get the Keefe Auditorium back. So I look at this as our opportunity to save the Keefe Auditorium. If it works, I think that's a win for the whole city. If it doesn't, we'll have to look inward and make some tough decisions. But based on that, based on the language that we have that's going to emphasize the need for affordable housing, I do intend to support this. I agree with my colleagues who have brought up the needs for green space, especially in conjunction with that housing. That's a conversation that is ongoing in my ward as we begin to look at the redevelopment of the Maynard Homes. Big concern there is that the residents may be losing a really unique aspect of the homes that they have there, and I would like to see more developments incorporate that into it versus going to sort of a standardized big-box form of as many houses as we can fit with a hallway entrance. I think the former is I think the former is, um, much more appealing than the latter. But given what we have before of us, um, I believe I will support this amendment tonight. Thank you.
Alderman Sullivan?
Thank you, Madam President. I, I can't support the, the amendment tonight. Here's why, and it really, it does hinge on the Keefe. But let me, let me talk about housing first because I stood in front of, uh, the folks at the Congregational Church back in the fall, and I heard the need for affordable housing in the city. So I think that that is a good, uh, jumping-off point for this amendment. Something I can't support. But what I can't support is the situation with the Keefe because I know what happens. I've seen it happen. We do this. We love these ideas. We get married to these ideas. And we say, well, well, I know, we're going to try to find this funding, and we're going to try to do this, and we're going to try to do that. And then it comes back to us again, and none of those plans are any further than they are today, which is right at square one. Maybe it's square zero because nothing has moved forward. We knew this day was coming. We knew it. Back then, when we started building the new middle school, money was cheaper. We didn't have the big elephant in the room, which is we can only bond thirty million a year for the next five years. We're now in an environment in the city where we have to start using or instead of and. And for that reason, I don't want to go ahead with this because then I feel it's going to pigeonhole us into keeping this, keeping the auditorium that sits vacant. I watched the meeting with my bowl of popcorn, and from what I could tell, and I rewound, I rewound it, forty days a year we use this theater, forty. So it sits empty ten nights a year. So with all due respect to, to, uh, Mr. Keefe, it's, it's an underutilized property now. And I think that, um, I can't support that because I, I know what's coming for Nashua taxpayers down the road. Thanks.
Alderman Dowd?
Okay. My history of, uh, the school and, and the auditorium go back a hell of a long way. To answer the fir-, one of the first questions was, it was located in that position in Nashua because they wanted it downtown. There were three positions, three places downtown that they considered, and they ended up building it there. I have all the original minutes from the Joint Special School Building Committee when, when that school was built. My grandfather was the president of the Board of Education. My father's law partner, Alvin Lucia, who was mayor, was the chair of the Joint Special School Building Committee. I have all the notes, and I have read them, almost on parchment paper, so. So they built it, they built it there. The other thing, I did watch the meeting the other night. I didn't eat popcorn. And it brought up a lot of questions. So a couple of days later, when I had a meeting with the people in the school district that maintain Elm Street, I said, I brought up the ten million dollars, the mothball it. They both fell off their chairs. They said, that's ridiculous. You know, first of all, for the first two years, nothing's going to be even, we get a proposal, it'll be two years before anybody touches the school building. The gymna-, uh, the auditorium right now is usable. It's been used and can be used. And the reason it's only used forty days a year is because the school department wouldn't allow anybody to use it more than forty days a year. So once, because they use it every day. Once they're out of the school, now somebody should manage who uses it and when. I'm sure you'd get a lot more dates. I'm sure the symphony would use more dates. I know actor singers would use more dates because they raise money that way. And you'll get other entities that will use it. I will say that if we had to spend thirty million dollars right now to keep it, I would say no. And my grandfather's name's on the big plaque in the lobby of that Keefe Audit-, Keefe Auditorium, and, uh, I hope that gets saved. But does it need thirty million dollars' worth of work? Well, if you were trying to make it like the Performing Arts Center. But you don't have to spend that money all at once. You know, you could spend it over five or ten years if you're talking about replacing seats and putting in acoustics and, you know. I brought, they said, you have to build green rooms. There is a phenomenal amount of space behind the stage for green rooms. You could dress the entire, uh, Green Bay Packers back there without any problem. So to keep it, first of all, for, like I said, for the first two years, it's totally usable and would be used more than forty times a year, guaranteed. And then when the school is torn down, I would suggest that we keep the, the classrooms along the back of the auditorium and, and on the north side of the auditorium because they can easily be converted to lobby and restrooms. All the utilities are right there. In fact, I had, uh, somebody draw up where all the utilities are. We're not going to spend a lot of money on utilities. The connections are very close, most of them on Lake Street, which is right near the Keefe. The only thing that, that we lose is the steam pipes coming down from the boilers at the other end of the school. But, you know, um, putting in a new Hy-Vac system, one of those classrooms can be used for the Hy-Vac system. And put, just connect the Hy-Vac system and, and use the auditorium, nowhere near ten million dollars. You know, I don't know how much it would be, but I had people that should know what they're talking about say closer to one side of the other of five. And that's not for three years. So when we start planning these other projects, it's, you know, whoever comes in with a proposal is not going to be touching that anytime soon. You know, we have to go over proposals, they have to give us ideas, they have to come back here, we have to decide which ones we like. You know, and then, and then just to do the plans for any of those buildings will take a year. So there's a lot involved in that. Let's see, uh, so would I spend thirty million dollars today? No. Would I spend five million to keep the Keefe? Personally, yes, having lived here my entire life, and I won't say how many years that is, but I've been in that auditorium and performed in that auditorium a number of times. So I, I think it's, it's a historic part of Nashua. And, and if, if, and if we can get money from other sources, that would be great. And it, and it should be available, I would think. So, and the other question was cost of proposals. If we go out and ask people for proposals, they spend a lot of money. Oh my God, that's their business. They have money put aside to do proposals. You have no idea how much the proposals of B A E cost. You'd be amazed. You could probably fix the auditorium with what they spend on one proposal. So proposals are part of doing business. So any of these, uh, architects and construction managers, they do proposals every day. That's part of their cost of doing business. If they do one and, and we have, change our mind, are they going to say no to another one? No, they're looking for business, so. There's a lot to digest, but I am going to support this because, um, the chances of ever building anything that size again here in Nashua, nil. And, and, you know, green space, I thought, when we reviewed all of the different proposals on looking at, at block squares on a, on a map, that there was going to be allowance for green space. At one point, we were going to put two ice rinks behind the, the auditorium. That's a lot of green space if we don't build those ice rinks. And you know how much green space is there now? None. Well, now the portables are gone, so I take that back. There is some green space in the back now because of the portables have been moved out. Uh, the other thing is, it was about the school keeping that building. School Department's going to pick up the cost very soon to support the new McCarthy School. And it's three hundred thousand a year roughly to maintain Elm Street right now. Do you think the school department's one of, going to keep that three hundred thousand dollar cost of maintaining Elm Street? Hell no. And if we mothball the school, it, it's not that much to maintain, just the heat. The electricity and the water usage will go way down. Oh, the other thing I wanted to mention is, when we evaluated using Elm Street for middle school, I was with the teams that went through from an engineering standpoint and evaluated the building. You don't want to use that for anything. And I'm not going to get into the whys, but there's a six-inch report that was done. It has all of the data and, and the engineering evaluations and the reasons why you don't want to get in there. You can't move walls. And I'm not going to get into why, but you can't move walls. And, and all of the infrastructure in Elm Street is a hundred years old, or that it hasn't been replaced. So just having said that, uh, I'm supporting this because I think there are ways to keep Keefe at a really reasonable price. I think the numbers that have been spewed out there are way out of whack. And, and we should get a handle on what it really will cost before we discard something that's been around for so long in the city of Nashua.
Alderman Lopez?
Thank you. So as the Alderman for Ward Four and representing that area, I, I have heard many, many, many hundreds of times, if not thousands, of requests for what are we going to do with Elm Street? So the people who already knew what we, that this was coming and knew what we were going to do, I would like to know where you were. Because the only answer I could ever give them was, well, we need to wait until we have more idea of what we're going to do with it. We need to do the feasibility studies. We need to get the R F P that we're talking about tonight. So, no, we really didn't know, and the public didn't know, and the art community had a general idea that something needed to be done. But I think the last time they checked with us, we were planning on, you know, keeping the Keefe Auditorium. We had a great proposal from Revier on the table. So, no, I don't think that anybody's been sitting idle or doing nothing. I think we have had public comment tonight that the Nashua Arts Commission is mobilizing on this. And I have a lot of confidence in the arts community. Um, I know the Nashua Center for the Arts was a very complicated project, and I think many, many patrons of the arts did support that. I don't think we actually saw the arts community fully mobilized because it was very clear from the beginning that that was an economic anchor and, and more of an event center model. So I think we're, we have a huge opportunity to access state and federal funding for resources and to keep an amenity that we know we will benefit from and we will profit from. I, I am always amused by people who will treat art and music as electives instead of opportunities and important aspects of any culture or community center. You know, in schools, we know that students do much, much better when they have art and music and other forms of self-expression. We know that intelligence scale isn't a straight line. There's multiple intelligence forms. And many people do very, very well when they're able to express themselves effectively. And many, many, many other people appreciate being an audience to that expression. So when we talk about the arts in Nashua, we should be talking about it as an economic opportunity. We invested in Nashua Center for the Arts based on a study that also suggested the Keefe Auditorium was a very important factor of that, and that we need to be looking at art districts. So we don't want to take our eyes off of the ball for that, uh, on that. We've had public comment and over the past several years that the Nash-, the New Hampshire Council on Arts has done economic studies showing that there's tremendous revenue potential in arts, in performing arts. And that was our justification for our last major investment. And there were plenty of people there who couldn't see what it could be. They couldn't see beyond it being a shoe store or not having more than one bathroom. And that's, I guess, the difference between people who actually build the things we use and the people who adopted it as their role to stand in the way of that. But I think, speaking for the residents who live in that area, when you live in a place, yeah, you do think of the apartments and the buildings. When I think of Boston, I definitely think of the buildings because they're so big even I can see them. So I don't always think of Nashville, uh, of, of Boston Commons other than my way to affront something or, you know, maybe eye candy. And I don't think that site deserves to just be somebody's stopping point or recreational spot. We do have Rotary Common probably three hundred, four hundred feet away on the other side of the Adult Learning Center. And there's plenty of use there, plenty of creative space. It's usually so empty that birds use it as like a landing spot. And, I mean, I don't think we need another one of those. Um, I think there are green space amenities in that area. The R F P can include those green spaces as well. It shouldn't be a choice between having amenities for people who live there and obliterating anything that's there right now so that you can make the most money for your buck. I think that's what we've seen in the past, is people saying, okay, well, we're going to do development and build housing, and we'll include all of this green space, and then not doing that. And I'm thinking specifically of the riverfront landing where we had these amazing waterfront designs and all that stuff. And then we had to fight over whether we were going to put a soccer field. Spoiler, we didn't. And then the money we put aside because we didn't put the soccer field, we just used somewhere else. So I would say claiming that we're going to change our priorities from housing for people that we know need it. And I, when I say I know that there's homeless, I mean, I know it because I can see it everywhere. There are people out tonight that are unsheltered. We've been devoting considerable city resources to try to address this issue. And that's just the tip of the iceberg when you consider housing stability and accessible housing. We know that's an issue. We're watching it happen in our budget. We should have known that was an issue five or ten years ago, and we didn't give ourselves enough time to build buildings that would actually house people. And I know there's been a lot of, um, criticism of the way Monahan Manor turned out because it's a tall building and it doesn't have all of the amenities that other people, you know, might expect in their housing. But that's not always an option for people. And people who have a place versus no place aren't worried about whether it has a basketball court. They're worried about whether they can get into it and whether it's safe and whether it's, it has room for them to stretch out and relax at the end of the day. So I think that's an important priority, that we need to be considering that, housing as a component. Um, I, I will not miss an opportunity to point out that affordable housing is a very wide umbrella. And I really appreciate Alderman Clement's wording it so that it references vouchers for federal programs. Um, I think that's an important component because, to, to my knowledge, the, the federal government isn't giving away vouchers for middle class or, or anything else. Um, so I think the amendments that we have are, are important. I think we've heard from the art community that they're trying to mobilize and organize. And I think it would be foolish to throw away an amenity that has historic value, performance value, economic value just because we don't want to plan ahead. We want to take the easy way and, you know, maybe claim that we're favoring green space or favoring, you know, economics when the reality is we're just taking a very simplified look. I think it's very important to keep the Keefe Auditorium, or at least entertain in the R F P, the ability to do that. I think we shouldn't start shutting off opportunities before our citizens and our residents have actually had a chance to try to organize and, and advocate for those things. And to the points made by the previous speaker, there are limitations on access to the building right now. I can guarantee that some parts of it are regularly requested by community organizations like indoor soccer, like basketball leagues, like rec leagues. Up until we need to actually start building housing or whatever ends up going there on that spot, I'm sure we can use the space, and it can be profitable, it can generate revenue, it can be something that offsets the cost of maintaining it until we're fully ready for our plan or not. And I think, again, it was very clearly laid out by the previous speaker that it's not going to be thirty million dollars to, to just keep it running or anything like that. It's, an actual plan for how to keep the proposal needs to be considered, the auditorium needs to be considered, not a, a proposal for how quickly to destroy it. So I would definitely be supporting this. Um, and I think the residents living in that area have a lot of other people making decisions for them. And many of them don't know who to listen to or what, you know, options are available because we need this process to be open-minded enough to allow concrete ideas to come forward. But I know that the programs that are in that area, the Adult Learning Center and Revive, probably are very enthusiastic about housing and a little bit less worried about green space in common areas.
Alderman O'Brien?
Thank you, Madam President. I would like to make the motion to move the question.
Motion is to move the question. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Motion carries.
Roll, roll call, Madam Clerk, or Madam President?
The, the roll call would be on the amendment.
Yes.
Clerk, please call the roll.
Alderman O'Brien?
Yes.
Alderman Timmons?
Yes.
Alderman Moran?
Yes.
Alderman Thibodeau?
No.
Alderman Govea?
No.
Alderman Lopez?
Yes.
Alderman Sullivan?
No.
Alderman Clement? Alderman Clemens.
Yes.
Alderman Senna.
Yes.
Alderman Jettie.
Yes.
Alderman Tebow.
Yes.
Alderman Klee.
Yes.
Alderman Dowd.
Yes.
Alderwoman Kelly.
Yes.
Alderman Wilshire.
Yes.
Twelve yays, three nays.
That motion carries. Alderman Clemens.
Yes, I'd like to move for final passage as amended of R-2432.
Motion is for final passage as amended.
Roll call.
Okay. Alderman Jettie.
Thank you. So, to those of you who were surprised by my yes vote on the amendment, you know, the more, as I analyzed it, you know, I realized that I'm not against saving the Keith, and I'm not against, you know, the amendment as far as, you know, requiring that, you know, a portion of it be for, you know, affordable housing specifically tied to, you know, the federal housing vouchers. You know, what I'm against is the, you know, is in the main motion, which is to, is that, you know, disposal of the Elm Street property by method other than sealed bid or public auction is in the public interest, and a request for proposals to dispose of the property should proceed. So, you know, what the amendment does is it modifies that requiring that the Keith be preserved and that the, you know, the federal housing vouchers be included. But, you know, I appreciate, you know, the comments made by Alderman Dowd, you know, about a way of, you know, keeping the auditorium. I too, you know, have experience with the building, and I too know that there are rooms behind the stage, you know, there's a couple of, you know, they're used now as classrooms for chorus and band, and there are classrooms, you know, beyond that. And as he points out, that provides plenty of space for the so-called green rooms that would be required. And he also pointed out that to the north of the auditorium, there are classrooms, you know, that could be, you know, preserved, you know, that they wouldn't have to be torn down with the rest of the building and that they could provide, you know, the restroom and lobby areas that have been indicated by the people who use the auditorium, you know, as to, you know, what needs to be done in the future. So, you know, he made, you know, very good points about that, but this resolution does not, you know, talk about that, doesn't specify that. You know, other people have talked, you know, I think Alderman Dowd and others have talked about how, you know, during the study, you know, there were, you know, different scenarios where there was green space preserved. But again, the request for proposal does not specify anything about preserving any green space. So, you know, I think, you know, those are great ideas. You know, the idea of, you know, during the committee meeting, you know, Director Cummings said to maintain the building as it is right now, you know, we cost, I think he said around $300,000 a year. So, we could maintain, you know, the building, maintain the ability for groups to use the auditorium for, you know, a lot less than what it was feared. So, you know, going ahead with requesting, you know, a proposal for, you know, the rest of the property, you know, without these specifications, I just think we're not ready yet. I think that those things should be nailed down, you know, before we request a proposal. So, I voted for the amendment because I thought it was better than the original resolution, but I'm still against the resolution as amended because of those problems.
Alderman Clemens.
Thank you, Madam President. Hoping I can maybe alleviate some of what was just articulated. And so, we don't, one of the things that Director Cummings pointed out to us at the Planning and Economic Development Committee was that we don't want to narrow this too much, right? So, it's pretty clear in here, look, we want to keep the Keith Auditorium. Whatever you propose for the rest of the site, it is what it is, but that's kind of what we want to do, right? So, when the requests for proposals come in, it's at that point that we're going to have to look and see what the developers have decided for the rest of the property. Now, if there's, while this is simultaneously going on with the request for proposals, if a working group, which I imagine there will be a working group consisting of a lot of stakeholders who want to keep the Keith Auditorium, realized that that building in the back that Alderman Dowd had mentioned is valuable to the project and is needed in order to bring down the costs, we can, there's nothing in here that prevents us from being able to say, you know what, we need that too. And we can go back to whatever proposal is on the docket and say, well, we're not tearing that portion down, we're actually going to need to keep that. Can you go back a little bit to the drawing board? And who knows if that's even going to be in whatever they come up with. So, the point that I'm trying to make is that there's a lot of moving parts that are going to happen in the future when we, you know, if we pass this. And there's a lot of things that we're going to have to look at and decide how we're going to move forward and how that's going to interact with the Keith Auditorium. So, you know, that's, I wanted to just put that out there. And then the other thing that was mentioned at the committee level by Director Sullivan was that our ordinances now require that any development would have 35% green space. So, there's green space already in the ordinances as they exist. So, I think, and I think it was kind of agreed upon at the committee level that, although it wasn't put into the resolution, it was sort of understood that, well, since that's already part of our ordinances, then we don't need to necessarily put that in there because, again, now you're restricting this down even further than what it already is. So, hopefully those can alleviate some of those concerns. I think this is a good solution going forward, and I'm fully, fully supporting it. Thank you.
Further discussion? Alderman Dowd.
Yeah, I've been involved in a heck of a lot of requests for proposals, I would like to admit that. And anytime you're doing a project this size and you put out requests for proposals, they're going to have a pre-meeting. The companies don't want to articulate something in an expensive proposal that doesn't meet the needs of the city. So, there'll be a pre-meeting where some of these things will be put out to these people that are bidding it, so we'll get proposals that meet what we're actually looking for.
Further discussion? Alderman Jettie.
Yeah, I, you know, Alderman Dowd is certainly more experienced in dealing with these things than I am. But I just kind of, I ask the question at these pre-meetings, you know, who is going to be at the pre-meeting? Who is going to say, you know, that, you know, we want these rooms in the back, these green, you know, kept for green spaces? We want the, you know, the classrooms to the north kept for potential lobbies and restrooms? You know, who is going to say, you know, we want, you know, a certain amount of green space, or we want the gym preserved, or, you know? No one is going to have the authority to say that unless we, you know, we say it. You know, we, the Board of Aldermen, have to give Director Cummings some guidance, you know, this is, you know, this is what we want. You know, right now, he's hearing, you know, he's hearing what I want, he's hearing, you know, what Alderman Sullivan wants, he's hearing what Alderman Clemens wants. How's he going to figure out what it is, you know, that the board, not individuals on the board, but what does the board as a whole want? And the only way that we can tell him that is by, you know, giving him a resolution which specifies that, I think. So, because the resolution does not specify that, I need, I have to vote against it.
Alderman Clemens.
Thank you. While I respect my colleague from Ward Five, I just want to reiterate the following, that the, the, this could not be any more clear in saying that we want to keep the Keith Auditorium. It could not be any more clear in stating that the goal of the city is to develop a plan that mitigates the cost of doing that. So, if you're having a pre-meeting with a developer, this is pretty clear. Look, Mr. Developer, the Keith Auditorium is a priority by the Board of Aldermen. Reducing the cost of maintaining it is a priority by the Board of Aldermen. By the way, we may need to keep that building that's in the back, just FYI. It doesn't need to be in this. It's clear enough as it is, I think. And so, for those reasons, I'm going to vote for this.
Further discussion? Seeing none, the motion before us is for final passage of Resolution 2432 as amended. A roll call has been requested. The clerk call the roll, please.
Alderman O'Brien.
Yes.
Alderwoman Timmons.
Yes.
Alderman Moran.
Yes.
Alderman Thibodeau.
No.
Alderman Govea.
No.
Alderman Lopez.
Yes.
Alderman Sullivan.
No.
Alderman Clemens.
Yes.
Alderman Senna.
Yes.
Alderman Jettie.
No.
Alderman Tebow.
Yes.
Alderman Klee.
Yes.
Alderman Dowd.
Yes.
Alderwoman Kelly.
Yes.
Alderman Wilshire.
Yes.
Eleven yays, four nays.
Resolution, that motion carries, and Resolution 2432 is declared duly adopted as amended. Unfinished business ordinances.
Second reading of O-24-003, establishing a fee for parking spaces utilized for extended outdoor dining.
Alderman Clemens.
Thank you, Madam President. I move for final passage of O-24003.
Motion is for final passage. Discussion on that motion. Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, and Ordinance 24-3 is declared duly adopted. New business resolutions.
First reading of R-24-033, proposing an amendment to the city charter relative to adding two additional members to the Board of Health.
Alderman Moran.
Thank you, Madam President. I'd like to make a motion to determine if it's necessary to move forward with proposing an amendment to the city charter relative to adding two additional members to the Board of Health by roll call, and I'd like to speak to that motion.
Alderman Moran.
Thank you, Madam President. This is legislation I introduced in regards to adding a social worker and a registered nurse to the Board of Health to bring it in line with the updated research, science, and data that suggest the population health model that is currently used in the Department of Public Health, which is separate from the Board of Health, is the best model to have, not just from the bottom up, but from the top down. I believe this charter change amendment, if we pass this here, it will go to Administrative Affairs, and I can produce evidence-based research and science and data behind the need for the population health model on health boards that are currently used throughout the United States and similar to models that are in Boston and other growing cities. Here, my friends, you will see that the registered nurse and the social worker have more competencies in the social determinants of health, which, back when the city charter was formed, the founders did not think that homelessness, domestic violence, addiction, suicide, and all these other factors will be part of their job duties. It is important to me as a social worker, who, by the way, I will never accept an appointment for this board in any way, shape, or form, that is not my intentions of adding my profession onto the board, but it is to inform, it is informed based on science, research, and data, and of all boards, to accept science, research, and data on how they model their advisory opinions, it should be the Board of Health. I will tell you, my colleagues, that the Board of Health itself has not taken a vote on this proposed change. I'm sure they will, but I can represent that the chairman does not support this. And given that, I will still ask that you support this to at least bring research, science, and data to Administrative Affairs to convince you all and hopefully the voters at large who will hopefully ultimately decide that this is good for the city of Nashua. Thank you.
May I?
Alderwoman Timmons.
Thank you, Madam President. I respect my colleague here views, however, the Board of Health do not agree with that, and I recommend that, or I move that we move this to committee, to let the Board of Health speak for themselves. So, my motion is to move this, to table this recommendation, this proposal.
We refer to committee.
We.
It hasn't gone, it has not been to a committee as of yet. That's what he asked.
I am not clear. Is this a, sorry.
Alderman Lopez.
Is this a non-debatable motion to table, or is this a motion to refer to committee?
Were you moving to table this?
No, I want to refer to committee. I would like the Board of Health themselves to speak on this issue. They have the opportunity.
It's a quirk, I think, in the statutory process by way of a city proposing to amend its charter. The first step is a vote where the legislative body, in this case, you, the Board of Aldermen, makes a vote that it is necessary to amend the charter in a certain regard. After that vote has occurred, then the wording of the proposed amendment is drafted, brought before the body again for a vote whether to put it on the ballot before the electorate. So, you don't have to do it tonight, but you have to take it in these two stages if it's eventually going to be put before the voters.
So, for my clarification, Madam President? So, as stated on this documentation here, moving forward, do we vote to move it forward or can we just table it? I'm still not clear on what we do with it.
You can table it, you can refer it to committee, you can discuss it however long you wish to discuss it, but before the final wording gets determined, a vote that it is necessary to make an amendment of the composition of the Board of Health has to be taken. Then, the final wording can be determined, public hearings are required, and eventually it gets put before the voters. So, it has to go through these various stages. The first one doesn't have to happen tonight.
So, I move to table.
Motion is to table. All those in favor say aye.
Roll call.
A roll call, okay. Clerk call the roll, please.
Alderman O'Brien.
Yes.
Yes.
Alderwoman Timmons.
Yes.
Alderman Moran.
No.
Alderman Thibodeau.
No.
Alderman Goveya.
No.
Alderman Lopez.
No.
Alderman Sullivan.
No.
Alderman Clemens.
No.
Alderman Senate.
No.
Alderman Jettie.
No.
Alderman Tebow.
Yes.
Alderman Klee.
No.
Alderman Dowd.
No.
Alderwoman Kelly.
No.
Alderman Wilshire.
No.
Three yays, twelve nays.
And that motion fails. Motion before us is to determine if it's necessary to move forward.
Madam Chair.
Alderman Jettie.
Point of order through you two, Corporation Counsel. So the vote to determine that it's necessary to change the charter, if I understood you correctly, does not have to be taken tonight. That instead, we could refer this to the Personnel and Administrative Affairs Committee, and then, and they could, and also the Board of Health. And they could, you know, hear testimony about it, and then make a recommendation to us. The Board of Health also could discuss it and make a recommendation. Then it could come back to us, and then we could vote whether it's necessary to change the charter. Is that correct?
You could do that. Eventually, you will run into time constraints to get it on the ballot. But depends when you want to do it. You may be a year and a half away from that, so there should be ample time.
Okay, so the, may I?
You may, yes.
So the ballot that we're talking about is not the state elections coming up in this fall. We're talking about the next municipal election, which would be the fall of 2025.
You could propose to do it for a special election if you wanted to and want to bear that cost, but I don't think that's what's being contemplated.
Right, but without referring any special cost, the next election would be, it would be the municipal election, not the state.
Correct.
Set, Alderman Jettie.
Could I move to have it referred to the Personnel and Administrative Affairs Committee?
Point of order, if, may I?
You may.
It says here, if it, in the script, Alderman, through you, the Corporation Counsel, that if we were to take a vote necessary to move it forward, that it would then go to Administrative and Personnel Affairs. So it's gonna go there no matter what, and it still has to come back. If it goes there by saying that there's a need, it goes to there, has a public hearing, and the public can discuss it. But if you just refer it to committee, there's no public hearing. The public don't get to weigh in.
Alderman Clemens.
Thank you, Madam President. Yeah, I, so my question is this, through you, the Corporation Counsel. If we take the vote that says that it's necessary to move forward with proposing the amendment tonight, and we vote yes, then we have the public hearing, assume we, let's get the feedback of the Board of Health. At that point, I imagine, and correct me if I'm wrong, it comes back to us here, and then we have to reaffirm that vote, or will it automatically go on the ballot?
There is another vote necessary by this body to put it on the ballot.
Okay, so Madam President, if I could, I will not support the motion to refer it because I think the process that's laid out here, to me, makes more sense. We still have the opportunity to get everybody's input. We still have the opportunity to not put it on the ballot if we decide that for some reason it's not ready for prime time, or whatever it is. So for that reason, I'm going to not support moving it to the committee, but rather support the original motion that Alderman Moran had stated.
So the motion is to refer it to Personnel and Administrative Affairs. Alderman, Alderwoman Timmons.
I'm going to pull the motion because it does make sense to move it to, to, to move the motion as is written, as long as the Health Department is able to weigh on it, weigh in on it.
But that wasn't your, that was your motion.
Now, what's whose motion?
That was your motion to refer to committee?
Yes, yes, it was.
So that's still the motion on the floor.
Can I ask a point of order? I thought Alderman Moran opened the discussion with the plan, with the motion. Is it an amendment?
It's a referral of the motion to committee.
Alderman Moran.
Thank you, Madam President. I'll rehash my days in the State House, and I would urge my colleagues to vote no on the Jettie motion.
Alderman Jettie.
So I just, you know, I'm not, I'm not opposed to what you're trying to do here. And from what Corporation Counsel is, what I'm hearing from Corporation Counsel is that, you know, if we refer it to the committee, you know, then at the committee, the committee could entertain it, could hear the evidence that you're talking about, could hear other points of view, and then, you know, that would all be available to the public. And then, you know, it could then be referred, the motion to determine that it's necessary to change the charter could then be recommended. And then at the public hearing, you know, people will have heard, would have had the benefit of everything that you've got to say. If it just goes to a public hearing, you know, the public stands up and says what they think without having the benefit of the arguments in favor. So I'm just thinking it would be a better opportunity for, you know, people who, you know, you and whoever else is in favor of this, a better opportunity to explain your point of view and, you know, and why you think this would be a good. I mean, I think just increasing the number to five is a good idea. Because I remember during COVID, they were having trouble coming up with core and, you know, trying to make decisions, and they, you know, they didn't have enough people. So I'm on your side here, and I just think it makes sense to do it the way that I'm suggesting, but I could be wrong.
Alderman Moran.
Thank you, Madam President. Now I see your point. I do now see and understand your point. I'm not, I'm preferable to still send it to Administrative Affairs with the public hearing, because then the opportunity will be at the full board. Again, the public still can come out during public comment and comment on what was discussed in Administrative Affairs. I just don't, and I, now after hearing your last explanation, I completely understand what you're saying. And I don't disagree with that in the sense that it gives the public an extra opportunity to hear about it and respond to it. But I also feel like if it went down that route, that's a route that could potentially die. And I'm very passionate about this issue, and I would like to hopefully follow the process through.
Ald, excuse me, Alderman Clemens.
If we go forward with this, the public is gonna have the ultimate say.
The biggest public hearing ever.
Alderwoman Kelly.
I am not weighing in on the two paths here, but there's also public comment at the Congress. So they would be able to speak on it, whichever way we go.
The motion is to refer to Personnel and Administrative Affairs Committee.
Roll call.
A roll call has been requested.
Alderman O'Brien.
Yes.
Alderwoman Timmons.
Yes.
Alderman Moran.
No.
Alderman Thibodeau.
No.
Alderman Goveya.
No.
Alderman Lopez.
No.
Alderman Sullivan.
No.
Alderman Clemens.
No.
Alderman Senate.
No.
Alderman Jettie. Alderman Tebow.
No.
Alderman Klee.
No.
Alderman Dowd.
Yes.
Alderwoman Kelly.
No.
Alderman Wilshire.
No.
Four yays, eleven nays.
And that motion fails. So we are back to the regular, the initial motion to determine if it's necessary to move forward with proposing an amendment to the city charter relative to adding two additional members to the Board of Health. That's the motion. By roll call. Roll call, please.
Alderman O'Brien.
No.
It's too late.
Alderwoman Timmons. Alderman Moran.
Yes.
Alderman Thibodeau.
Yes.
Alderman Goveya.
Yes.
Alderman Lopez.
Yes.
Alderman Sullivan.
Yes.
Alderman Clemens. Alderman Senate.
Yes.
Alderman Jettie. Alderman Tebow.
No.
Alderman Klee. Alderman Dowd.
Yes.
Alderwoman Kelly.
Yes.
Alderman Wilshire.
Yes.
Twelve yays, three nays.
That motion carries. I didn't ask for additional sponsors when this first came up. I didn't know if there were any additional sponsors. Alderwoman Kelly.
For the charter change?
Yeah.
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's it? Done, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, I think Alderman Kelly had her hand up.
I did put my hand up.
Yeah.
You stood by it.
Yeah, you can alter that. Given its first reading, no. Yeah. It's gonna be assigned to the Personnel and Administrative Affairs Committee, and I would like to send it to the Board of Health also.
Yes. That's what I was gonna ask.
Okay. Schedule a special Board of Alderman public hearing on Monday, April 22nd, 2024, 7:00 p.m. in the Aldermanic Chamber.
First reading of R-24-034, relative to the acceptance of a scoreboard for Dubie Field at St. Andrews Park donated to the city by Nashua Cal Ripken.
Additional sponsors. Alderman O'Brien, Alderman Moran, Alderman Thibodeau, Alderman Goveya, Alderman Lopez, Alderman Klee, Alderman Dowd, Alderwoman Kelly. Given its first reading, I'll assign that to the Budget Review Committee and the Board of Public Works.
First reading of R-24-034, changing the purpose of up to $2,200,000 of unexpended bond proceeds from the design and construction of a division of Public Works Office Facility to the design of a Public Works Division Garage.
Additional sponsors. Alderman O'Brien, you're already a sponsor, Alderman O'Brien. Alderman Moran, Alderman Lopez, Alderman Clemens. Given its first reading, I'll assign that to the Budget Review Committee, the Board of Public Works, and schedule a special Board of Alderman public hearing on Monday, April 22nd, 2024, at 7:00 p.m. in the Aldermanic Chamber.
First reading of R-24-036, relative to easements for the Riverfront Project.
Additional sponsors. Alderman O'Brien, Alderman Lopez, Alderman Tebow, Alderwoman Klee, Alderwoman Kelly, and myself. Given its first reading, I'll assign that to the Committee on Infrastructure and the Planning Board.
First reading of R-24-037, relative to the acceptance of $1,532,92 from the United States Department of Housing and Urban Development into Public Health and Community Services grant activity, HOPWA housing opportunities for persons with AIDS.
Additional sponsors. Alderman O'Brien, Alderwoman Timmons, Alderman Moran, Alderman Lopez, Alderman Senate, Alderman Tebow, Alderman Klee, Alderwoman Kelly, and myself. Given its first reading, I'll assign that to the Human Affairs Committee.
First reading of R-24-038, relative to the acceptance and appropriation of grant funds pursuant to Contract Amendment Number Two in the amount of $863,694 from the State of New Hampshire Department of Health and Human Services into various public health and community service grant activities.
Additional sponsors. Alderman O'Brien, Alderwoman Timmons, Alderman Moran, Alderman Lopez, Alderman Senate, Alderman Tebow, Alderman Klee, Alderman Dowd, Alderwoman Kelly, and myself. Given its first reading, I'll assign that to the Human Affairs Committee and schedule a special Board of Alderman public hearing on Monday, April 22nd, 2024, at 7:00 p.m. in the Aldermanic Chamber.
First reading of R-24-039, supporting a limited five-year bonding plan.
Additional sponsors. Alderman O'Brien, Alderman Timmons, Alderman Moran, Alderman Goveya, Alderman Lopez, Alderman Clemens, Alderman Klee, Alderwoman Kelly, and myself. Given its first reading, I'll assign that to the Personnel and Administrative Affairs Committee.
First reading of R-24-040, relative to the acceptance of the 2024 Livable Nashua Sustainability and Resilience Plan for Use as Guidance in Planning and Future Decision Making.
Additional sponsors. Alderman O'Brien, Alderman Moran, Alderman Lopez, Alderman Clemens, and myself. Given its first reading, I'll assign that to the Personnel and Administrative Affairs Committee and the Planning and Economic Development Committee. New business ordinances.
First reading of O-24-012, relative to the compensation of election officials.
Additional sponsors. Alderman O'Brien, Alderwoman Timmons, Alderman Moran, Alderman Thibodeau, Alderman Goveya, Alderman Lopez, Alderman Dowd, Alderwoman Kelly, and myself. Given its first reading, I'll assign that to the Personnel and Administrative Affairs Committee.
Madam President, there are three names that are already on the legislation that aren't listed here, so myself, Alderman Clemens, and Alderman Senate are actually the, those that wrote the.
Okay. Duly noted, thank you.
Thank you.
First reading of O-24-013, amending the location of the dallian that hosts reserved parking space due to construction.
Additional sponsors. Alderman O'Brien, Alderwoman Timmons, Alderman Moran, Alderman Thibodeau, Alderman Goveya, Alderman Senate, Alderman Klee, Alderman Dowd, Alderwoman Kelly, and myself. Given its, given its first reading, I'll assign that to the Committee on Infrastructure. Alderman O'Brien.
Thank you, Madam President. I would like to make a motion to suspend the rules for a second reading of 0-24-013. You may speak briefly to this.
Alderman O'Brien.
As many of you know, the Front Street is gonna be under construction very shortly, and Delaina's House does not have adequate parking. To compliment Alderman Lopez, who was on top of this, he researched it, made communication with several of the directors, and was able to come up with a plan. Infrastructure seems, as Chairman of Infrastructure, I have decided to vacate this and to move it to a second reading and let us decide on what to do, because it has such unilateral support. So therefore, I urge you to suspend the rules and look forward to a future motion by an Alderman on what to do here.
Alderman Lopez.
I'd like to make a motion for final passage, and I'd like to speak to it.
We have to do suspension.
Well, my motion's first.
The motion is to suspend the rules to allow for a second reading. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries. Alderman Lopez.
I would like to make a motion.
I would like to make a motion for final passage.
Would you really?
Thought about it.
Have to have a second reading first.
Second reading of O dash twenty-four dash zero-one-three. Amending the location of the Delana's Hosted Reserve Parking Spaces due to construction.
Alderman Lopez.
So first, I would like to thank Alderman O'Brien for being his statesman here. I tried to call him a couple of times because initially I was under the impression that we might need to rush this through for construction. And then I thought maybe it would be okay because none of the contracts have been awarded. And then I saw today's agenda and was like, oh, no. So he's being very, very generous, I think. But parliamentary procedures aside, this is a pretty important move. Those spaces are proximate to Delana's House's downstairs entrance. It allows veterans who are staying at Delana's House struggling with housing security and housing stability, and often struggling with a lot of mobility and service-connected injuries, to get to and from their cars in a reasonable manner. The nearest parking lot we had in the past was on the top of the High Street Garage, which is an eternity away if you have a bad back or need a walker. So we found that there would be a bunch, a number of construction projects happening on Front Street, which would necessitate the use of that parking space. But we also already have the spaces leased out and sponsored, I think, rotationally. The Elks Club usually does it, sometimes it's the VFW. But typically, the community comes and supports these parking spaces for veterans so they can get to and from their cars. So working with Jill Stansfield from the Parking Department, we were able to not only locate a similar amount of parking, but approximate because the Delana's House has a Factory Street entrance, which has a similar amount of distance. They cross the street and then they are able to park right up behind the river. So it was a really good compromise. I want to credit the Parking Department for finding it. They even managed to find underutilized ones. So we're taking underutilized parking spaces and leasing them, thereby guaranteeing some use. So I hope everyone will join me in, in voting for this just so that we can temporarily relocate the parking while they do the work on the overpass.
Motion is for final passage. Further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries, and ordinance twenty-four thirteen is declared duly adopted. The long-awaited period for public comment. Okay. First speaker we have is Lori Ordolano.
Lori Ordolano, forty-one Berkeley Street. Couple of things. You know, I saw all the letters come in and the communications on the financing for the downtown, or the Riverfront project, which adds up to about thirteen and a half million of spending. And we've done, I think, around three million, maybe more, of spending on the architect work. I would like to know, we bonded, I believe, twenty-one million for this project. Where are we on spending for this project? How close are we to have used, using the, all the allocated money? And do we have any shortfall potentials that are going to go on here to complete the project? You know, we have a lot of financial issues in this city right now with the bonding and how much we can spend. And I think when the administration comes in with large amounts of money that are dedicated to a project, they should come in with a spending chart of what is left and how much we've spent down. So everyone knows where we are. And I don't know if anyone can answer this question for me, and I hate to have to file a write-to-know to figure it out, but I have largely wondered, where do we stand on the spending on these projects? And I think this board should be telling us that. And I will let you know, for the Art Center, there was a write-to-know put in by a gentleman in January who asked what the final cost for the Art Center project were. What did we spend? And I saw an email from Mr. Cummings saying, we don't know. We don't have a number for that. Why don't we know what we spent on that Art Center? It certainly wasn't twenty-five million like we were told. There was an additional nine point five-five million dollar bond, split out into a seven point one million and a two point four-four. And we spent that. And a matter of fact, our bonding resolution said very clearly that the architect fees and the purchase of the building were going to be reimbursed out of that bonding money. And when you look at the reimbursement contracts that came back, that money was taken out of the nine point five-five million from ASCOMA and not from the bond proceeds that was written in the language where it was supposed to come. Why were we allowed to change where that model, where that money was reimbursed from? Which tells me that the construction costs were certainly higher by three million dollars outside of the twenty-one million that we spent. There's a lot of questions on how the money was allocated and spent on that Art Center. And the very fact that Mr. Cummings and no one in this city knows how much we spent, which I estimate is closer to thirty-five to forty million. But we don't know. Because I have the email that says, we don't know.
Thirty seconds.
Please, let's not do this anymore. And also, when it comes to legal fees, none of you had questions because you just saw the thing? It's expensive, but you should know, the courts have never found any parties in the city frivolous or vexatious in our suits. And I think you ought to start asking what can be done to reduce those costs with your policies, procedures, and guidelines within this chamber and your open-door policies for citizens to come in here and access information. You should be doing something actively in here to improve the costs on that. Thank you.
Paula Johnson?
My name is Paula Johnson. I guess she's a top, top act to follow. I still reside at fifteen Westborne Drive. I haven't moved since I've been here tonight. Two weeks ago, I'm a little bit concerned here. You have a code of ethics and a code of conduct in this chamber. And Mr. Sullivan ran over in his time, and he was asked to stop. I get it. We do run over. When I was on my board, people ran over a little bit in what they were saying. And then the President of the Board was a little bit annoyed, I mean, a lot annoyed, actually. And then the gavel went down. She threatened to cut off the mic. I'm sorry. You know, you all are elected by we, the people. I get it. I've been elected. We don't always like what people are saying. Get a tough skin here. If you have a thin skin, you don't belong here. But the bottom line, to ever say, to try to do that to a taxpayer, and that was the same night that you voted yourselves, your own self-serving, raise. Now, isn't that amazing? You get mad at somebody who's up here talking, who pay your stipend, pay the salary of the employees, and he made a point, and the gavel came down. And I really think that's horrible. You have a code of con, excuse me, a code of conduct, and maybe you should review that code of conduct. You give us three minutes, the Speaker, I have one minute and forty-two seconds left. But you all go on and on and on and on and on. I mean, there's no time limit on your discussions, but there's a time limit on we, the people. And we, the people, should never be shut down. Because we are what makes you in government, because we vote for you. And so I'm not really happy about that because, like I said, I've been on both sides here, elected and private citizen. The other thing is I'm concerned about with the downtown parking for our extended outdoor dining. Every year I come and I go round and round with the mayor and Mr. Cummings. We take away the handicap parking. And every year, I've got to come in and I've got to show proof that you got to allow handicap parking. And I'm going to tell you, when you put those barriers up, you put those barriers up for people who have disabled and can't walk and that need those closed parking to the establishment. So I hope this year, when you start renting out everything, you consider the people who are going to go downstairs, town, downtown, and spend the money, and that you have appropriate enough handicap parking. Because I'm one of them that have a plate on my car. I don't visit downtown because there's no place to park.
Thirty seconds.
What am I going to do? And all these other people who cannot walk, let's be considerate. We talk about it all here in the chamber, about people in the community. Be considerate of people who have a disability that's less fortunate than you are in a lot of other ways. Thank you.
Stephen Skare?
Stephen Skare, one-eleven East Hobart Street, Nashua. Good evening, Madam President. In light of our discussion at your last meeting, I'd like to comment on the two thousand and eighteen American Academy of Pediatrics Affirmative Care Gender Policy, which informs our local policy. The policy describes transgenderous youth whose identity does not match their assigned sex. Gender identity is one's internal sense of who one is, male, female, or neither. Big problems in the policy. Sex isn't assigned at birth, it's determined at conception. Second, a female can only imagine what it feels like to be a male. Third, this approach assumes that these feelings, not our bodies, are authentic selves. That's religion, not science. The policy requires the immediate understanding and appreciation of the youth's gender experience. A delay in affirmation is considered watchful waiting, which the policy claims, without evidence, follow the footnotes, is an outdated approach that does not serve the child because critical support is withheld. Children who still believe in Santa Claus can infallibly diagnose themselves because children who are pre-puberty know their gender as, gender as clearly and consistently as their developmentally equivalent peers. With Animal Farm logic, the policy claims that teens aren't identifying as transgender because they're mentally ill. They're mentally ill because their gender identities aren't sufficiently affirmed. Lead Arthur Jason Rafferty demonstrated how he applies the affirmative care in his own practice when he determined that a fourteen-year-old girl with profound mental illness and a history of sexual assault was eligible for testosterone on her first visit, even though she told him that he'd like to, she'd like to have a baby one day. You can hear Isabel's story if you go to my Twitter, at Sidewalk underscore Steve, or on my Facebook.
One minute.
Importantly, there's no sound evidence that puberty blockers and hormones improve mental health, much less reduce suicide, according to systematic reviews of research in Finland, Sweden, and England. The academy has shut down international criticism of their policy and has refused to let its members discuss it at their annual conferences. The affirmative care model turns our most vulnerable youth, who are uncomfortable with their bodies, often because of autism and P T S A D, into lifelong medical patients. Since our Nashua, Nashua's libraries and our schools teach children that they have gender identities and affirm them when they believe they're in the wrong bodies, our city is complicit in this medical scandal. I realize not all of you may agree with me, and I encourage you to speak with me. Thank you.
Beth Skare?
Beth, Beth Skare, one-eleven East Hobart Street. Alderman, one thing I love about living in New Hampshire is that as a woman, if I need help picking up something heavy or reaching something, I can count on a man helping me, no matter his age or political party. New Hampshire men are chivalrous. Recently, Alderman Thibodeau and I were leaving with a group from the Hunt Building, and he graciously stepped back along me to go first and held the heavy wooden door for me. And that, that makes it so much more confusing and painful when I see male elected officials who support allowing males to compete in women's, in female sports. When Mayor Donchus sent two city workers at eight-thirty A M. on a Sunday to have my Save Women's Sports flag removed from the citizens' flagpole, I was mystified. Why does he oppose protecting women's sports? And why was it so urgent to take down a flag acknowledging the reality that men have a huge advantage competing against women? He knows males are taller, bigger, stronger than females. He knows males will dominate in female sports. He knows that male and female sports are segregated because of the large difference in size and strength. He knows that men would take virtually all the trophies and scholarships if sports competitions were unisex. He knows that women risk serious injury in contact sports like soccer and volleyball. He knows that males changing in female locker rooms risk exposing females to naked male bodies, which is a serious kind of sexual abuse. He knows all of this, and yet he had my flag removed that acknowledged that female athletes are being dominated by males in their sports. Mayor Donchus has joined the rush to affirm the unscientific belief that males can become females just by declaring they are. It's madness, and he knows it. This will all be very sad in a few years when we look back at all the carnage and we see, we all realize the serious harm that has been inflicted on female sports. The lost awards and lost scholarships, the serious physical injuries, and the sexual abuse. And also concerning flags, everyone's invited to the raising of the Christian flag on the Nashua City Hall Plaza at eleven A M. on Easter Sunday morning to celebrate the resurrection of our Lord Jesus Christ.
Thirty seconds.
Hal Shirtliff, the plaintiff, who won a unanimous U.S. Supreme Court ruling in the Religious Liberty case, Shirtliff v. Boston, will be speaking at the event. Thank you.
Tim Bosch?
Good evening, thank you. I come before you tonight, I live thirty-seven Arrow Lane in Nashua. A real terrible thing started happening about two months ago in our neighborhood. Alderman Thibodeau just jumped right in. He was in office maybe, I don't know, a month beforehand. But so, personally purchased sixteen Archery Lane. And we found out on January twenty-fifth that they had the full intent to turn it into an eighteen-person, at that point in time, boarding house, rooming home. This was going to be people who were not going to live in our neighborhood for a long period of time. Wasn't going to be anything that fit with the residential ordinances for our nine, our zone, which is single-family homes. That's what it is. We reached out to Director Sullivan. We shared our concerns. Not least of which are end concerns were, will our voices be heard? Will we be listened to? Will more than a dozen people living at sixteen Archery Lane and the impact that will have on our neighborhood, on our property values, all of this be concerned? Or will the simply, city simply look the other way and allow the owner of sixteen Archery Lane to utilize contrived language akin to Orwellian doublespeak to hide the fact that the dwelling will not be a single-family home? Well, fortunately, initially, as of February fifteenth, we didn't find out until February twenty-seventh, the city agreed with us. The city had determined it was going to be a rooming house. The city informed the owner of this, said that that's what it would have to be. Said that we would have to go to Planning Board, they would have to go to Zoning Board, that there would have to be changes because this wasn't allowed as is. The owner responded back, well, then I'm just going to do it as a single-family dwelling, and made it clear that he intended to do the exact same thing with the property. We were concerned that maybe they didn't understand that this person was thumbing his nose at them. So we'd reached back out. We're like, hey, these are our concerns, this is what it is. I'm sorry?
No, I'm sorry, one minute.
Okay. The, thumbing his nose at it and ignoring it. We were like, hey, the city shouldn't back down to this, he's clearly going to keep doing it. We reached out, we put our, that out, March second. We got nothing back. March sixteenth, we see a building permit on the property. We reach out again, nothing. We then make it clear that we're coming tonight. Information, some people had heard that we were coming tonight, a number of us.
Thirty seconds.
And all of a sudden, at seven o'clock tonight, we get a, we get an email saying our voices won't be heard. The Director Sullivan and the mayor are willing to talk to us. That's not listening to us. That's, they're going to tell us how it's going to be okay. A rooming house with a dozen people or eighteen people is not appropriate on Archery Lane. Is not appropriate with little children in the area, is going to damage it. It is a safe, wonderful suburban residential neighborhood. We don't have police officers down there. It's not, and it's not going to be safe anymore. And I'm very sad.
Ben Bosch?
You got this, buddy. I will stand aside. There you go, bud.
Hi. Hello, my name is Ben. I live on Arrow Lane. I like the way that my neighborhood is now. I like playing outside with my friends. I like to ride my scooter and go for walks. My neighborhood is safe. I do not want a rooming house full of random people staring at me. Please help this neighborhood be safe from rooming houses because this neighborhood does not deserve to be destroyed. Please support kids and families.
Thank you. Jackson Bosch?
Hello, my name is Jackson Bosch. I live on Arrow Lane. My neighborhood is a safe place to play, walk, and bike. There are children that are growing up in this neighborhood. My neighborhood is safe for everyone. If we added this rooming house in our neighborhood, there would be a, there would be random people living here for a very short amount of time. This quite possibly could be unsafe. I enjoy my neighborhood, I do not want it to be in danger.
Thank you. Connie Paquin?
I'm Connie Paquin, and I reside at twenty four Archery Lane, and I have bought sixteen Archery Lane. We all know that the surge in Nashua is not up to speed. In the last, I don't know, ten years, I think I've had three raw surge dumps in my basement. And they're going to add twelve people next door to me. What is that going to do? I just spent thirty thousand dollars redoing my finished basement because on September eleventh, the drain water and the sewer all run together. So, if for anything, twelve or eighteen people should not go into a property where you'll have all these problems. Besides that, I've also now had to get cameras and I have, because I am alone now in my property, and I'm on a dead end street, I have a broken back of me, and I'm going to have this rooming house here. We know what that does. I've had someone in my family that had problems, you know, didn't, lost their job, drinks, drugs, alcohol, whatever. They stole from me, they lied to me when I was there for everything they wanted. Now, these are going to be twelve or eighteen strangers. What's going to happen? I just, I just find this is a beautiful neighborhood. We have no duplexes. It's all R nine zoned. We have nineteen children in this Arrow Lane and Archery Lane. One is sixteen years old, the rest are below, I think, twelve or thirteen. We just had two brand new babies. There's a two year old right across the street from this property. It's a problem. We walk our dogs, we walk the kids. You know, they see me with the dog, and it's, hey, let's go walking with Connie. That's not going to happen. These kids are already afraid of what's going to happen. So, that's all I have to say.
Margaret St. Louis?
Hello. Well, I'm Margaret St. Louis. I live at one oh six Gilson Road. I'm here to discuss something a little less selfishly here. I am here to discuss a concern I'm having with my government lately, and I'm hoping that the council will hear me and hopefully support me. I'm specifically here to talk about the ongoing genocide in Palestine. Like many of you, I have viewed the relationship between Palestine and Israel as complicated. And shamefully, I left it at that for a while, until I started getting exposed to real time catastrophes on my phone. I was stunned, like any person would be, seeing unjust murders. But I was also raised by a community where watching the news was the way to find out what was happening worldwide. But the news wasn't showing what was on my phone. My phone and my country's perception did not match. So I started my research. Gathering information on the region's history and timeline, I started following journalists from Israel and Palestine. In a world now filled with so much misinformation, there is a responsibility to dig for those credible sources. Now, I'm here to tell you that Nashua citizens don't want our money going towards Israeli, Israelis' support. I have lived in Nashua most of my life. I went to Maynard St. Bell Elementary School, then on to Ellen Street Middle School. I even performed in your Keith Auditorium that you all are talking about. And then I finished off the public school district at Nashua South. I've taken classes at NCC before. I'm even excited for the new brewery to happen downtown. I love this city, and I want to live here for the rest of my life, and I want to share that message with people.
One minute.
I want people to live here as well. This is a thriving town, and I've seen it change in my short amount of life years here. I want it to continue doing it that way. We have a pretty great education system and an active downtown, and now a beautiful theater, which I'm sure will generate a lot of income for this town. We are becoming one of the greatest places to live. This doesn't seem like the greatest place to live if you aren't supporting, if you are supporting a genocide. So, my closing words, let's keep our money local. Let's represent the wants and values of the community you serve, and I beg of you to just consider advocating for a ceasefire. Thank you.
Jonathan Spiress-Savett?
My name is Jonathan Spiress-Savett. I live at thirty nine Coburn Avenue in Alderman Gouvea's district, and I work at Temple Beth Abraham, the Jewish synagogue in Elderwoman Kleese. And I am part of the multi faith and multicultural activities that help us learn from each other and come together to make Nashua a more just community. Usually, I come here and I would usually be here earlier talking about the Elm Street development and other housing related things. I skip that to speak just once. I will say as a public service that you've scheduled some business on April twenty second, which is the night of the first Passover Seder, which might, might not affect your ability to, to do the business you planned that night. And just since this came up, I just want to say as a religious person, a Bible based religious person, my own, support out of my own faith for, for trans rights and trans lives. I was gonna, I had a statement I was gonna say about, about Israel-Palestine as well, but I really decided instead that a lot of people have come from the community to talk, and I want to, I want to listen more. And I just so, so I think what I will do is just say that I'm bringing a lot of lives here as well, who are involved in the conflict. And rather than make a public statement to you, I really just want to turn to my, my, hopefully, potential connections in the community. And I will listen and, and hope maybe there's a chance to converse afterwards and, and, and rather than, than my making a public statement here. And we can chat after the meeting or, or, or anytime. Thank you.
Nicholas Calera?
Hello, Board. Hello, Board. My name is Nicholas Calera. I'm from Two Paddington Place here in Nashua. I'm here in an attempt to represent the millions of Palestinians whom the state of Israel is subjugating in the occupied West Bank, besieged Gaza Strip, and in the diaspora. I believe that being one of the largest, most diverse cities within our great state, we not only have the right, but the responsibility to uphold our state motto of live free or die by passing an immediate and permanent ceasefire resolution. For the past one hundred seventy one days, innocent men, women, and children in Gaza have been indiscriminately slaughtered by shells, dumb bombs, and high powered targeted munitions paid for by our tax dollars. Tax dollars that per capita from the city of Nashua amount to around one million three hundred fifty eight thousand forty eight dollars. That one million three hundred fifty eight thousand forty eight dollars could have been spent on one hundred sixty one new affordable units for our growing housing crisis, fourteen new elementary school teachers to fix our staggering teacher shortage, or expunge the complete student debt of thirty five of our recent college graduates. Instead, that one million three hundred fifty eight thousand forty eight dollars went on to aid in the thoughtless slaughter of over thirty two thousand Palestinians, of which thirteen thousand were children with dreams and lives ahead of them. One million three hundred fifty eight thousand forty eight dollars and at least thirty two thousand debt. The city of Nashua has, by proxy of our tax dollars, spent forty two dollars on every dead Palestinian in Gaza. I was lucky enough to visit the storied land of Palestine this past year, facilitated by a class I took at my alma mater of Boston College. The trip to the occupied West Bank, led by its professor Eve Spangler, allowed me to see the cities of Jerusalem, Bethlehem, Ramallah, and Habraam. While on my trip to Palestine, I came to face to face with what countless human rights organizations, including the Human Rights Watch, Amnesty International, the Defense for Children, even the Israeli organization Betsalem, have condemned to be apartheid in the occupied West Bank. I challenge anyone who reels at the mention of apartheid to actually read the reports, as it is without a shadow of doubt by any measurable metric. My group, which was led by an Orthodox Christian group by the name of the Syrah Center, was subjected by the military occupation that millions of West Bank Palestinians must endure every day of their lives. This included countless checkpoints staffed by the occupying Israeli military officers questioning, forced travel by segregated roads, and at times even confiscation of passports and phones. While departing from our trip by the Ben Gurion Airport in Tel Aviv, as Israel forbids any commercial airport to be built in the occupied West Bank, myself, another white student, and two black Muslim students were detained for over two hours. We were each graded a security level six, the highest level they have, which is defined to be used for suspected, quote, anti Zionist terror threats. As Leah Tchanzki, an Israeli Canadian filmmaker, said in an article in Mondo Weiss, quote, "Six is for Palestinians, Muslims, and hostile internationals. Hostile is defined as not Zionist or suspected of questioning Zionism. Anything above a three means interrogation." I believe that we as a city must follow the precedent that others in our state, such as Durham and Lebanon, have set. What is possible is the end of the genocide if we, as the United States, cut off the funding of Israel's weapons. Thank you.
David Calera?
Good evening. My name is David Calera, Two Paddington Place in Nashua. I've been a Nashua resident for over twenty years. My wife is a student, a student, she wishes, a school teacher with Nashua School District, and my two children have graduated from Nashua schools. Don't tell my ancestral families from Lawrence and Lowell, but I consider Nashua my home. I love the city. I'm here tonight to support my son and also support our peace seeking generation, our younger generation. They've lived through a life that has been full of wars and unjust deaths caused by their homeland, the United States, and we want to prevent that from continuing. Almost two hundred municipalities around the country have already called for a permanent ceasefire in Gaza, and I'm calling on Nashua to do the same thing. The most representative form of government is local government. No one is suggesting that Nashua is going to be peace to the Middle East. But we do have a part to play in representing myself as a citizen and all these other folks that have come before us today. So your constituents are asking, let's not kick the can down the road. Let's not have this just open to public comment at the end of a great three hour meeting. Again, we'd like to hear your opinion. You have public comment after this as our representatives. We'd like to hear where you stand. We'd like to hear where your position is on this, and then we'd like some of you to endorse the position to call for a permanent ceasefire in Gaza. That's what we'd like to hear, and that's what I would suggest. Thank you very much.
Patty Ledoux?
Good evening. My name is Patty Ledoux, Nashua resident all my life, one Archery Lane, Nashua, New Hampshire. I'm here because I'm very concerned about my neighborhood. I lived here all my life and over sixty years in the, in the hood that's, that I'm in, over near Bishop Gerton. And for some unknown reason, there was a purchase on sixteen Archery Lane by a, a man that I think sort of pretended, because I've known the family for years, and they didn't know that he was going to propose having a sober house, I think they call it. And it shouldn't be there. I could just tell you that. I live in a small, I am all for people getting sober from alcohol, drugs, or whatever. I think it's wonderful. I think somebody was, our family has been touched. But they have to look at where you're putting these. Can't just throw them in any place, please. This is, this is a, I'm very passionate about Nashua. I love Nashua. I think Nashua's a wonderful place to live. And I just, it, it pulls me down to even think about it. I've been really upset about it, and I, I don't, I, that's why I'm here to speak about it. And I will tell you, the gentleman that, that has proposed, has bought this and proposed to do what he's doing, honestly, please look at this better. Alderman or zoning board, planning board, Mayor Donchus, please, because he's done this before in several places across the United States. We've, we've delved into it, did some research, and I will tell you that one place in Worcester that he did this to, a small, we live in a horseshoe, and a little tiny street in between James Street with four houses, and there are a lot of little children there. And anyway, but in Worcester, when he did it,
One minute.
A small, a small area like this, he put it forty, let me see, forty seven times, the police were called to that house and, and in a matter of three months. And then, bottom line, that when the police got to the bottom of it, there was nobody in this sober house, because he becomes just the landlord. He's, the people that he leases it to, he finds somebody who, and I'm sure there's good ones, but I'm just telling you this is the past of what he's done, and it's not good. So, the thing of it is, is we're at the bus stop right at our house to the corner, and it's going to affect everybody. Bishop Gerton High School's right there, within a quarter of a mile. And also, too, they're, they don't like it either as well. I really, should really, really consider it, especially Nashua's a great place, and this isn't a good fit. We really have to look where we're putting these. Thank you very much.
Kevin Gerard?
Hi, Kevin Gerard, Two James Street, also here opposing the rooming house on Archery. Here to support my neighbors and oppose this with facts and data. I'm sure there's plenty of logistical things you got to think of, utilities, you know, sewage water, drainage, parking, you know, counselor, some, somebody on site with the gentleman in the corner said, you know, we're here to support Nashville businesses, employees, the vibrant downtown. I didn't hear, we're going to support the families and, you know, like the kids growing up, you know, the gentleman over here said, we're going to preserve and, preserve and grow Nashua. I'm thinking we're going to preserve our neighborhood and grow, let the kids grow in the neighborhood, and, you know, we kind of, you know, decided to live in, you know. I guess that's kind of it, you know. So, thank you.
James Daw?
Hello, good evening. I'm James Daw. I live at three thirty seven Brook Village Road. I've never been to a city council meeting. I've definitely never spoken at a city council meeting. But I felt morally compelled to come here tonight and urge you to adopt a resolution in support of a ceasefire in Gaza. I'm asking for you to demand an end to the wanton massacre of tens of thousands of human beings. I'm asking you to demand an end to the blockade of humanitarian aid that's preventing food, water, healthcare from getting through to countless innocent civilians, mainly children. I'm asking you to make a statement showing the world that the people of New Hampshire and the city of Nashua value justice and the sanctity of life more than anything else. Our state motto is live free or die. The people of New Hampshire do not back down from what is right, no matter any potential cost. And as I said, this is my first time at a city council meeting, and I got to see a lot of what you guys discuss obviously has to do with budgets and projects and millions of dollars going here or there. And I want to say that this is something that you can do for free, for no money, and make a huge statement to not just Nashua or New Hampshire, but there's a presidential election in eight months. You guys are representing one of the biggest cities in one of the few handful of swing states. People are paying attention to what's going on here, and I hope you take that into consideration. Thank you.
Thank you, and you did a fine job. You did a fine job for your first time. Bradley Conway?
Good evening to the board. My name is Bradley Conway. I currently work here in Nashua, and I love this city. I'm here tonight because I really want to see Nashua pick up the slack left by our federal congressional delegation, whose moral failure to call for an end to the genocide in Gaza has not only given cover to, but nurtured anti Muslim, anti Arab racism here in Nashua, while our hard earned tax dollars are being funneled to the military of an unaccountable foreign government. Last meeting, I discussed how the US corporate media has consistently engendered an imbalanced media climate in its coverage of the genocide in Gaza. The one sided media coverage dehumanizes many members of the Nashua community and justifies the continued, of the US foreign, of the US policy of starvation and total war against the civilian population of Gaza. Emboldened by the US media reliably manufacturing their plausible deniability, President Biden, Senators Shaheen and Hassan, and Representative Annie Custer desperately want to spin their constituents' lack of institutional support as moral indifference to their more, to their modern day Holocaust. And this could not be further from the truth. For too long, those with access to the levers of power in government have turned a blind eye to the avalanche of human suffering unfolding in Gaza to preserve their own self interest. A great example of this is how the Nashville Board of Aldermen has stalled this urgent campaign for an entire month as the city's constituents have been forced to watch their Palestinian brethren live streaming their own extermination. I'm sure that many on the board are planning to hide behind the same tired excuse that the resolution for a permanent ceasefire is not the business of the Board of Aldermen. However, there appears to be a large number of Nashua residents in this room tonight who think otherwise. who think otherwise. In the face of Congress and the US media's sustained campaign of cruelty and dehumanization, hundreds of cities around, across the US have set a new precedent for taking the lead on moral leadership in government. Tomorrow, Dover, New Hampshire will be discussing a ceasefire resolution that they drafted, and they'll be voting on it. Without some actual moral leadership from the city of Nashua, our federal leaders will continue to sacrifice millions of Palestinians, our fellow man, to the outrageously racist, torturous, and genocidal Israeli settler colonial project in the name of US interests, and they will continue to get away with it. Genocide is bad. Never again means never again for anyone.
Thirty seconds.
Every level of government in the US, or every level of government in every corner of the United States is being called upon to parrot these obvious historical truths so that our federal leaders can't pretend that the people, that the people are neutral. We aren't. Each of us represents thousands of people across the city and the state who want New Hampshire's population centers to use their power to make the world a better place for us all before it's too late. Thank you very much.
Rasha Maoud?
Good evening. I am Rasha. I live at 169A West Hollis Street. I'm a resident, a mother, a wife, a daughter. I'm a member of Southern New Hampshire for Palestine, and we are here calling on the board to take up and pass a ceasefire resolution. I'm sad, angry, traumatized, tired, and disappointed. Six months in, of a livestream, livestream genocide, and the situation has worsened even as a US court has found probable evidence of a genocide taking place, and even when the United States Security, the United Nations Security Council passed a resolution calling for a ceasefire, Israel continues to target civilians in Rafah and all around Gaza, disregarding all rational thought, human capacity. This is a stain on our humanity. Southern New Hampshire for Palestine reached out two times to each one of you here, and only one Alderman responded. This means our local leaders are not listening, just like our senators are not listening, and the Biden administration is not listening. Senator Shaheen, Biden, and others pay lip service, saying ceasefire is necessary but fail to take action. This is cowardly. We need American leaders who work for us. Unfortunately, most of Congress has received campaign contributions from Israel. Do any of the Aldermen here take campaign funds from AIPAC, the Israeli lobby, which controls American politics? That's a question. Recently, US Congress tied aid to Israel with keeping the government afloat. We love our Jewish brothers and sisters. Surely, though, it is not in our best interest to align ourselves with Zionism, the Zionist regime which is committing the 21st century Holocaust against Palestinians. Why don't our leaders-
One minute.
...use taxpayer dollars to improve our communities? I was fired from my job today. Leadership was uncomfortable with a Muslim woman speaking out for Palestine, and to be honest, these past six months have been devastating for me and the people in my community. Young people, immigrants, black, brown people need to live and work in a safe, inclusive, and just space. With rent, in the city of Nashua, our rent at $2,000, I worry that we'll be homeless or will have to move from Nashua. But I do not worry about the day when I go back to God. I will tell him that I did everything I could to save lives. We will be following up this week with the Aldermen again, and we hope you understand the urgency now for the residents of this city who came out tonight, many more who couldn't make it. We hope that you side with humanity and introduce a ceasefire resolution, and we stand ready and willing to work with you. Thank you.
I'm not sure I'll get this name right, but Muhyi Sultan?
Okay, good evening. My name is Muhyidin Sultan. I live in 169 West Hollis Street, Nashua. I'm a Palestinian. I came, I met my wife, Rasha, in Bethlehem Christmas Eve 2015, and we get married in 2019. So I was, I can't say like, I can't keep speak, like, hours of, hours of what I exposed myself since I was a child from the terrorist Israeli occupation, and it's a lot. You know, my, my grandfather, he was an orphan, and he was raised by a Jewish Palestinian man. So I was raised to know that the one who raised my grandfather was Jewish, so we don't have any problem in this issue. The other things, I was, the Mossad assassinated my uncle when I was six. They detained me, the terrorist Israeli soldiers detained me when I was eight, and then other, after that, many detention. When I went to visit my father when he was dying with my wife and my, my son, he was less than a year, they deported my American wife, and she was away like 23 days from like her child who was breastfeeding, okay? Many things, I can't tell, but when we hear in the history, oh, there was a genocide happening in the Holocaust, or where, or what, how the human, when they did nothing, how they didn't do anything, oh, now we see it on our phones, everywhere, we see like an active genocide happening, and we have to do something for it. For me, I can tell you that Israel is falling, and that's very clear.
One minute.
And all of the genera, the new generation now, they have a different, like, they realize what is the reality. Good for any city in US or out of US to do something, to write their names in the history, that they did something, they say something against that genocide in that time, not after that, oh, yeah, genocide happened, no, now, we have to do it now, to make-
Thirty seconds.
...the great Nashua greater. This is what I see. I see that they are going, and actually, it's good for everybody because when we liberate Palestine and Jerusalem from the Crusades, the Crusades retreated to Europe and they started the Renaissance. The Renaissance was the, it was the result of their defeat in Jerusalem, and this is what will happen with the Israelis soon. They're gonna find a different approach, but what we have to do is to make something now against the genocide. Thank you.
Dave Johnson? Dave Johnson?
Good evening, Aldermen. Thank you, Mayor, for having me here tonight. My name is Jonathan Hong. I live at 9 Bancroft Street, and the reason I'm here, my family is not unfamiliar with oppression. My grandpa passed away in this month, in 2013. My grandfather was a revolutionary. He was in Vietnam, that's where my family migrated from China to Vietnam, and during the war, my grandfather fought for freedom, and when he was a marked man, he ran back to China, and in China, the Communist Party saw him as a traitor. They threw him on a rice camp for 21 years of his life, and just hearing the despicable and just like grotesque things that my grandfather had to survive to get my family here. I have, I have friends and family in Palestine, and I'm very emotional because, like this former speaker just now, I am scared for them, because before I met my friend Donna, she would tell me that she is under military law. Every, every point that she goes through, she must show her identification. She's a civilian. She's never committed a terrorist act. My friend Ahmed, who came here from Palestine, he's a dentist, but he had, he came here to retrain and live a better life, when he went to Atlanta and got off the bus, he literally was like, is there anyone going to check my identification? And to his surprise, no. It was just such a paradigm shift for him, like, I don't have, I am, I'm not seen as a terrorist. So I am here today because it is in my grandfather's memory that I stand up against oppression. I am here in the greatest country, the greatest city. I moved here from Boston to Nashua, and I love it, and I have to be here and say something because just here, I could spend here and just tell you the difficult things that my grandfather went through. Think about simple things of not having salt-
Thirty seconds.
...iodine, water. You just cannot function as a human being. You lose your faculties, you lose your eyesight, and that is where, what is happening in Gaza right now. 50% of the population is women and children, and they are starving. This is what I want you to hear. I want you to adopt a resolution for a ceasefire immediately, permanently, not during the month of Ramadan.
Time.
It's just a Band-Aid. Thank you.
Mercedes? Manarino? Not here.
Yeah, she's not here, but I have a testimony from another Nashua resident. If that's, would be agreeable.
You have something to read into the record, is that what you're saying? Okay.
If you do this, you're gonna have to do it all the time, every time, every month. We are gonna be here till 3 o'clock in the morning sometime.
I'm so sorry.
You have to stick with the rules.
So, hi, my name is David Johnson. I live at 15 Fairmont Street in Nashua. I'd like to tell you a little about myself. I'm a lifelong resident of Nashua and a stay-at-home dad. I'm raising my son Ethan and my wife Kristen, and we are expecting our second child this summer. Nashua is a wonderful place to live and raise a family. The reason I'm writing is that I'm hoping that this letter will help to convince the Board of Aldermen to pass a resolution calling for a total and permanent ceasefire in Gaza, where men and women and children of Gaza are suffering immensely from the unmerciful assault from Israel. Thirty to 40,000 Gazans have been killed so far. The great majority have been internally displaced and the threat of starvation for many looms. You may be asking yourself, why would the Aldermen of the city pass a resolution on an international problem? My answer is that it would tell the people of Nashua, the people of the state, and our representatives in Washington, where we stand on the slaughter of human beings, and that we recognize their suffering and demand that it stops immediately. The request of a resolution on an international matter by the people of the, a city or town is not new. During the 1980s, people of towns and cities across the country asked for resolutions to call for an end to the apartheid in South Africa. These resolutions carry weight, resolutions matter, since, so once more, I'm requesting that you please pass a resolution calling for a total and permanent ceasefire in Gaza. Opposition to injustice at all levels matters. Thank you for your time, and may peace come to Palestine, Israel, and all who suffer. David Johnson.
All right, now I have remarks by members of the board. I'm gonna start over here tonight. Alderman O'Brien?
I'm good.
Okay. Alderman Moran?
Thank you, Madam President. Just a couple things. April 4th, we'll be having a joint PDC and Administrative Affairs Committee meeting. It's a special meeting. It's taken out of order to pick up legislation that we, that was referred to our two committees regarding the Livable Nashua Plan, and the point of having the earlier meeting, oh, did I get the date wrong, Donna? Did I get the date? April 4?
It's Sustainability Plan-
The Livable Nashua Sustainability Plan, yes, sorry. I heard, I saw head shaking, I just wanted to make sure I got the date right. If I got the date wrong-
Correct.
Thank you, all right. But the point of having the earlier meeting is to get this back in front of the city before Earth Day, because it's kind of symbolic. So I hope my colleagues from BDC will join Alderman Kelly and her team for the joint meeting on April 4th. Also on that meeting, we will be, we were gonna hear it last week, but we just didn't have the time, but the wonderful Director Sullivan will be presenting about sober homes in the city, and I welcome the community members that were here with their concerns. Please bring them to that joint committee and let us hear you, what you would like us to do and how we can help you, and then Director Sullivan can answer your questions in the public. Also, you know, going back to future legislation that will hopefully move forward as the, expanding the Board of, Board of Health, you know, best practice for the Boards of Health are to, not the Department of Public Health, but the Boards of Health to make recommendations regarding zoning, and to my understanding, that, after speaking with Director Sullivan, that hasn't occurred. I know Director Bagley is involved, but there's no advisory opinion from the Board of Health regarding zoning for sober homes, zoning for asphalt plants. These are all things that are best practices that I hope the Board of Health can involve themselves in, and maybe they can hear your words as well, why there should be specific zoning regarding health and human services in your neighborhood. I know she's not here any longer, but the member of the public who had criticism for our president, I only known President Wiltshire for a couple of years, but I, she acts in honorable way every time I've interacted with her with respect, even when we've disagreed on things, and I think it's a bit unfair when the president is trying to maintain order that, that we establish that rules and have empowered her to enforce, that she gets criticized for it. She's just following the rules and maintaining order for our board, and for that, I appreciate her leadership in doing so. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Anyone else on this side? Alderman Lopez?
Yeah, so first I wanted to express my support for one of the kids who's very closely connected with the HOI team, the youths that we did a service project with last Tuesday, he was, well, last weekend, he was admitted to the hospital, and it was very, very touch and go, and I consider myself pretty seasoned, having worked with the homeless for years, being a member of the Health Council and all that kind of stuff, but watching kids struggle with life and death like that is both inspiring and humbling. So I want to wish Santiago and his family my best, and let them know that we have, that I, he has all my support. I also wanted to comment on what the speakers were saying today. I did follow up with a call on Friday. I have not yet heard back, but I do think that we need to stop killing, we do need to find a way to reach a peace. If we've appointed ourselves as world's guardians and we're willing to make all of these deals to trade technology, then we also have to hold ourselves accountable, and, I mean, if the best we can do is step out of the way and decline to actively oppose ceasefire, then at least we can do that, but I think we can do better, and I think we need to do more. I also wanted to express that solidarity, I guess, with the residents that are struggling with the sober housing program, only because we've been working on the Human Affairs Committee in past sessions to figure out what exactly is a human, what is a sober housing program, what constitutes one, and how are we tackling that as a city? And the city's in a very difficult position because often if we apply a definition to one, it has to apply to all, so code enforcement is trying to be supportive of the many, many, many people in the city who need recovery, and that does add some vulnerability to people who exploit that overtly for their gain. There isn't anybody more vulnerable than people seeking recovery and entering into an agreement in a trustful way, and then that's not being honored by the people who are running the programs that they're part of. The difficulty is, how does the city manage that? What are our legal abilities to do that? I think it starts with the zoning board. I would definitely speak to the zoning board, and I would encourage the mayor and Director Sullivan to do what you always do and try to support the community through these difficult situations, and I commend Alderman Thibodeau for jumping right in, because I know as a new Alderman, you might see something like that, and it's like, oh, no, I don't know what to do here, but he did not, so I commend him for that, and I hope there's a resolution that will satisfy neighbors and need. Thank you.
All set, Alderman Sullivan?
All set.
Alderman Clemens?
Thank you, Madam President. So I wanted to address some of the folks who came out tonight to speak on the ceasefire resolution. I actually sent an email to Rasha and Bradley, I think I sent it the other day, but I'm going to read it into the record because I want my opinion on this- But I'm going to read it into the record because I want my opinion on this to be clear. So I have contemplated the idea of a ceasefire resolution thoroughly. I've spoken to a few colleagues. While I'm personally in favor of a peaceful resolution between Palestine and Israel, I do not feel that an official resolution from our city government asking for a resolution to the conflict is in order. Traditionally, the Board of Aldermen in Nashua speaks as a board about issues directly related to the operation of our city government or directly related to events, things, and people in our community. And while I understand that many folks in our community are affected by this conflict, it is not something that I personally wish to bring forward as a legislative resolution, so I'm going to decline to do so. I will, however, continue to personally advocate for a peaceful resolution between Palestine and Israel. Thank you.
Alderman Senate?
Thank you, Madam President. Just wanna start, I alluded to this a bit last night during the Budget Committee, but I just wanna thank Nashville Police Department Chief Rourke, Captain Hannan, Sergeant Rico for, for their time and gracious guidance through their department a couple of weeks ago. I was able to join them for a tour of the facility over on Riverside Drive, as well as a ride-along. I, I'm told that I got what's probably the quietest ride-along they've seen in several years. I, I kept reassuring them that I think that's a good thing, that, you know, reinforces the fact that we live in a safe city, it's well-policed and well-managed. But it was, I opened it nonetheless, we had some really good conversations about their practices and some of the concerns that they have going forward as a department. And so I just wanna reiterate my thanks to them. I also want to extend thanks to the NHRA, National Housing Authority. They've hosted me at a couple of meetings over the past couple of weeks in regard to the redevelopment of Maynard Homes. It's a large project that's looming in Ward 7. There's a lot to wrap our hands around. And I know there's gonna be more conversations, but I'm really, I'm really happy to be part of that process and be discussing that with all parties involved. And, yeah, I believe that's all I have. Thank you.
You're welcome. Alderman Tubo?
Thank you, Madam President. Yeah, what a night we had, huh? This was great. First off, I just wanna say that, you know, I agree with Alderman Clemmons and his remarks about the ceasefire. I mean, you know, I will be the first to say that I don't believe anyone here in the aldermanic chamber is taking any money from AIPAC or any, or any of these Israeli government PACs. All our contributions are online, anybody can see them. That's not really how this local government works. We're not taking international money of it, or at least I'm not. And I don't think, I would, I would go out on the line saying I don't think anybody else is either. Would I like a ceasefire? Yeah. Would I like killing to stop? Absolutely, 100%. And that goes for people dying in Ukraine, people dying in Africa, because there's lots of genocidal things going on in some of the African countries. I just, I think, you know, like Alderman Clemmons said, is we, I think, and I've said this in both the last two aldermanic meetings, I've spoken on this. This is like the third time now, and I'm gonna stick with exactly the comments I've made on it. So the other thing I just wanna speak on real quick is, speaking of Elm Street and the basketball arena over there, we, my team that I helped coach finished the bantam season, the city national bantam, winning a championship last week, probably the last game at that, on the Chestnut Side Auditorium, with Coach Brad Lemire of Ward 9, and Alderman, Tim, Alderman Timmons' son Al also coaching. She has three grandchildren on the team. It's like three out of the five that could start at one time. And my son were able to win that championship. So I thank the coaches and all the kids. It was a great opportunity for them, and I'm happy that that happened. I also wanna say that, and I'm not gonna say any names, but unfortunately, one of the children on the team lost their mother to some tragic circumstances the day after that game. And so, you know, I feel for that kid. Great kid, great family, and it's just, it's hard to see that happen after such a great moment in his life to have that happen. And so, you know, I'm thinking about him, and I'm thinking about his family, and I just wanted to mention that. Thank you.
All set? Alderman Kelly?
Thank you. I just wanted to expand on Alderman Moran's remarks around our joint. So we'll be looking at the Sustainability Plan, which is critically important document that's put a lot of work in. I'd love for any alderman who are interested in hearing about it to come to that joint because it's going to be a document that's going to continue to steer our recommendations and things that we do in the city moving forward, especially as it applies to climate change. Hope you'll all be there.
Committee announcements. Alderman O'Brien?
Tomorrow night, starting at 5:00 p.m., here in the aldermanic chamber, will be follow-up work on the parking study. So this is open to all infrastructure committee members, but all are welcome. Please, keep in mind, I like to have things wrapped up at a decent hour. Infrastructure starts at 7:00. So therefore, if we're starting at 5:00, I'd like to have a little bit of a dinner break for those that may need it. So a little courtesy, please. Thank you.
Alderman Timmons. Alderman Timmons.
Go for it.
Okay. Thank you, Madam President. Tomorrow, the Cultural Connection will be meeting at 12:00 noon here at City Hall and Auditorium. I will suggest that our public go to those meetings, we do need you. It's a very good cultural type connection. Some of you have been there, but I would like to see more of you guys at that meeting. You'll find that you have a lot of comrades there. As tomorrow, 12.
Taking order, you just invited us to the Public Health thing, too?
Yes, that's a different one. Absolutely. So we'll be, I invited the aldermen, but I'm inviting the public to Cultural Connection.
Other committee announcements? Alderman Dowd?
Thursday night, joint special at 7:00 p.m.
Alderman O'Brien?
Thank you, Madam President. I would like to make a motion to adjourn.
The motion is to adjourn. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Post, we are adjourned at 10:46 p.m. Thank you, everyone.